So, goals and guardrails are what we want to evaluate the superintendent on come June. So I just wanted to stress to everyone tonight that our goals tonight, or our mission for tonight, is to do a high-level overview about the goals for this year for the superintendent and by relation for the district. And that, you know, if we can just keep focused on that, what we really want to see the district accomplish and how Dr. Cash can implement these goals. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rivera. Dr. Rivera, the meeting is yours. Will you sit up here?
Yeah, probably. I think it'll work out much better. Thank you very much. It's a little easier to manage from up here. Thank you very much, colleagues. Both board colleagues and, thank you, district personnel. Welcome to the session for executive affairs. I'm very much looking forward to presenting to you on visions and values, guardrails and goals to move the work of the board forward. I want to thank Ms. Belton Cotman for starting this work and for allowing me to carry it forward, as well as being so generous with sharing her materials with me. And I'm looking forward to a nice discussion about this, as well as the work as we move forward. Before I get into my presentation, I'd like to invite Dr. Cash to make any remarks that he would like to make before we move forward. Dr. Cash, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, colleagues. Thank you, Dr. Rivera, for the work that you have advanced so far. We've been in fairly robust conversations over the last several days and weeks about this important matter. And while I don't believe we are at the point of complete mutual agreement, I do think that we're on perhaps a first time track for the board and for this district. And that is to follow some really well-thought-out national practices around how you set and establish goals for the district, for the superintendent. And I appreciate that you're going to be sharing some of that evidence-based practice this evening. Goals need to be focused on student achievement that are measurable and doable, actionable. That means you tend to focus on fewer goals rather than more goals. Too many goals, not well-focused, makes it difficult to achieve and set important baselines, particularly at a time during that we're in of a global pandemic. So I think this is a great time to make some transitions in the way our historic practice has been. And I look forward to the substantive discussions that will be taking place this evening and in the weeks ahead, so we get an agreement on what the district goals, what the superintendent would be for the 2021, 2022 school year. So, thank you, Dr. Rivera, and colleagues on the board. Let's go.
All right, let's go. Thank you very much. So, the first thing that I would like to point out about this entire process is it is a process. This is merely the first, the first pass at it. I don't have anything. Let's see. Okay. Can everybody mute their mics?
It's in here.
I think it's in here.
It's in here. Everybody's got to be muted.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm not logged in the same sense. I think Mr. Hurd.
I think we've taken care of it. It sounds okay right now. So, we're going to move ahead. So, the first thing that I'd like to point out about this process, it's a process. It's going to take a lot of discussion and a lot of very deep work on behalf of the board and the district. One of the things that you'll see happening in executive affairs sessions as we move forward is we're going to visit and revisit all of these pieces. The sole purpose of tonight's presentation is to give an overview of the process, why it's important, how it's important, and then we will start moving forward through this process throughout this year. My hope is, by the end of the school year, we're going to have very clear vision, values, guardrails and goals put into place, building upon the work that's already there as a part of our school board vision, as a part of the district vision. It's really, there's been a lot of important work in a lot of different places, and what we're trying to do is get it all to align, so everybody is on board, clear and focused for the benefit of our students and our BPS community. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start the overview. Afterwards, I would ask that, we don't do questions during the presentation, I would like to get all the way through this. Afterwards, what I'm going to do to make sure that everybody's voice is heard is I'm going to call on board members, one at a time, to make commentary. If, at the time, you don't have any comments or questions, you can say pass, and I will circle around to you again. We're going to do at least two passes of this. And I'm going to go in alphabetical order, just to make sure that everybody has a moment to say something, to contribute, because this really has to be work that's owned by all of us as a board. So with that, I'd like to advance to my first slide. And I'm still figuring out how to do it. Do I do this?
You're a desk.
I'm here. Do you?
Go ahead and let me know when I have.
I'm ready now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Listen?
Yes, please.
There you go.
Okay. So what I wanted to start with is what we have so far, which is our current vision, values and long-term goals. You could go ahead and advance, please. Thank you. So this is kind of a busy slide, but we have a lot of work that we're already building upon. So first of all, from our district, putting children and families first to ensure high academic achievement for all. And what that means in terms of belief statements on the right-hand side, believing that Buffalo Public Schools graduates should be prepared for a diverse, rapidly-changing world and be prepared to thrive in it, as well as to shape its future. That all schools should be safe, equitable, flexible and serve the community in which they are located. All students can learn and be successful in school, and all segments of the community should be involved in education. And that schools should provide for the development of life skills, foster an awareness, understanding and valuing of self. That schools should provide all students with the skills for post-secondary success and incorporate advanced technology when appropriate, and should constantly reevaluate programs. So these are the two things, both from the district and the board, that we have existing guiding our work. And if you look at it, there's a lot of places where those two visions touch in terms of ensuring academic excellence, to have innovative high schools, services for our needed students and families. These things are going to come together. What we really want to do is align them in a way that's clear, that's consistent, and add in things as we're moving forward at this point in time. Could you advance the next slide? Thank you. So, how do you get there? From high, point A, which is the intention of high academic achievement for all, post-secondary success, development of life skills and continuing to fulfill the educated bargain. How do we get there? The way that we get there is student outcomes-focused governance. That's the roadmap to get us from A to B. Because, as it was just mentioned in a, in a meeting I sat in at work today, that access without support isn't really access. And that's from Vincent Tinto, who works on post-secondary achievement and retention. What he's trying to say here is, it's not enough just to provide something. We have to give the support so that success happens. Student outcomes-focused governance is the way in which we align all those pieces to ensure that students and families not only have access, but they also have support. Could you advance the next slide, please? So here is a little bit of argument based on the Council of Great City Schools work, as well as NISBA and the NSBA, which is why do we need student outcomes-focused government? There's a lot of reasons why. It identifies strategic issues and critical challenges. It establishes standards and focus on student performance. It aligns district budgets with standards. It reflects the values and vision of the BPS community, a critical piece, and it promotes effective governance and use of time. In other words, it's going to guide our work here as well. And it leads, most importantly, it leads to higher levels of student achievement. Basically, all of those pieces need to happen in order to have those higher levels of student achievement. It is the thing, these are the levers of success that can really propel districts and communities forward. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so what does this look like? This looks like the, in this kind of visualization I've given you, the Council of Great City Schools student outcomes-focused governance framework. And what you can see is, all of these circles, all of these areas, touch on each other. Visions and goals, values and guardrails, communication and collaboration, unity and trust, monitoring and accountability and continuous improvement. If you go back and look at some of the earlier slides, we're not going to, but as an explanation, all of these areas touch on the visioning that we have between the education bargain and the board's vision, as well as all of those pieces that I just read that lead to student achievement. You can't have vision and goals without being clear about your values and guardrails with input of your entire community. You can't have vision and goals without communication and collaboration. You have to build unity and trust between all of the different stakeholders, and you have to have monitoring and accountability, because, again, these things need to be resourced in order to have it happen. And what we need to do is have a clear vision in order to know where we need to go next in order to ensure that everyone has access, support and success. Can you advance the next slide, please? Thank you. So, Council of Great City Schools student outcome-focused governance framework is actually aligned with NISBA and NSBA, because they all talk about these pieces, and it's supposed to be a continuous loop. This is the thing about assessment. Assessment, really good assessment, is, it's recursive. It goes back on itself. In other words, you start with your vision, you go to your standards, you assess where you're at, you create some accountability with it, and based on what you find out, then you align things to push it forward to meet your vision. You look at your climate, and you work and strive on this continuous improvement cycle. So, assessment, accountability and alignment are critically, critical partners in the work, because assessment allows us to see what's happening, accountability allows us to clearly see what's happening, and then we align in order to push improvement further. And this is critical for school boards as well, in terms of school board leadership for higher levels of student achievement, because the wealth of research that Dr. Cash referenced all says that school board leadership is a critical component to making sure that what we want to have happen, which is high academic and career success, college and career readiness for all our students, it's the, it's the critical, it's one of the critical components in order to make sure that happens. Can you advance the next slide for me? Okay. What's the relationship? There's a lot of terms that get flown around when we talk about this kind of assessment. And what this slide is designed to do is to show you the relationship between vision and goals, values and guardrails. Your vision is your end game and your commitment about, in who, your identity, you know, who as a group you want to be. Your values express that vision. What are you valuing? Because, for example, you could conceivably commit and have a vision of high academic achievement, but you can get there by different routes. Your values guide how you get there and how you're willing to make that happen. One of the things you may have noticed in the very first slide, when I was speaking about the values and the vision that we already have in place, you probably noticed equity. Equity is one of the values that we use to achieve that vision. Guardrails are the things that we put into place in order to make sure that we're adhering to our values and adhering to our vision. These things then work together as a part of this larger process, and it's helpful because it enables focus. Can you advance the next slide, please? Okay. Where do strategy and communication fall into this? Strategy and communication equals effectiveness and understanding. So, the problem often is, there are so many things for us to attend to. The results end up becoming unclear, and the community becomes frustrated and disengaged. One of the things that can happen is if we don't have strategy and strong communication, the relationship between all of the things that we're doing isn't going to be clear, and we're also not going to have the kind of focus that we need. And as a result, it looks like we're moving from thing to thing to thing to thing and never fully completing anything. When we have strategy, it focuses everything on shared priorities, and our results are monitored and communicated with the community, so people know where we are and where we're going next. Stakeholders then have a sense of where, what's happening, and then, if more needs to happen, will have a clear path to start pushing forward to something else that might be important that wasn't initially included in our strategy. If you noticed, you probably noticed, most of this presentation has circles and cycles, and there's very few straight lines. And the reason why is, you're always working this strategy, you're always working this process in order to identify the next thing that needs to happen. And so as a result, it's not ever fully finished, but if you are strategic, you have strategy and good communication, it's going to be clear when you close out one piece of work and you move on to the next related piece of work. And when we work in this way, we can have higher achievement. Can you advance the next slide, please? Thank you. So, this is a snapshot. It's not super legible on this PowerPoint, but all of the board members do have a copy of this, because Ms. Belton Cotman gave it to us, distributed it, we have it, we have more, we can have more copies too, if you don't have it for whatever reason. But what this does, this document says, visions and goals, the board will, in collaboration with the superintendent, adopt goals that are student outcomes-focused. That's the most important piece at this stage in the process. But as we move through this process, we're going to go deep on all of these different shaded boxes, because one of the things that we as a board need to commit to do, if we're going to be a part of this process, if we're going to really engage with this process, is we need to assess ourselves about what we're talking about and the extent to which we are either not student outcomes-focused, which is on the one side in the red shaded box, we're approaching student outcomes-focused with things yellow, which means, you know, you're getting there, if you're at a green where you're meeting the focus, or hopefully, our board is going to get to the point quickly where we master our student outcomes focus. And if we have those pieces, those criteria that are underneath each, it's going to help us push our work forward. Can you advance the next slide? Values and guardrails are what I was describing earlier. It's the how, you know, how are we going to do this? What do we value as a group? And what are the checks, literally the guardrails, that we put into place to make sure certain things happen? And they need to be in line with, with the goals, because there's supposed to be guardrails for those goals in order to make our vision and our mission come true. And you can probably see, again, in those boxes, it's the same situation. Not student outcomes-focused on the one side, mastering student outcomes-focused. As we move forward in the process, we're going to be talking about how we're going to monitor that, how we're going to monitor what's going on with the district, and also how we're going to monitor ourselves. Can you advance the next slide? So, next steps. Board colleagues have materials to review. You have a copy of this PowerPoint. I'll send it out again. Because I was ill last session, it may be kind of buried in your email, so we can send that out again. We can also send out the Council of Great City Schools materials, as well that Ms. Belton Cotman has really researched and worked through for us. What I'd like to do, this is my proposal piece, I was thinking, when I was thinking through how to do this in a way that makes sense, so that we don't take up too much of your time and too much of the community's time, we allow enough time to deal with the other things that we need to deal with. We should have, I propose that we should have small group meetings held, and I will organize them, among board colleagues for feedback. So, you, the idea is, here we're going to give some feedback, and then we're going to do more in-depth feedback, which I will then report back. We'll discuss the process at the next work session, that's part of my goals, because we need to be on the same page about it. And then subsequent work sessions led throughout the board. So, there's going to be, what I really want to make sure happens is that everybody's a stakeholder in this. And, you know, committee chairs, president, vice presidents, and every single board member who would like to be a part of it will contribute to drafting guardrails, timeline, process, draft review and finalization. We will not move forward on any piece of this until we gain consensus about what we as a board want to see moving forward. You can advance to the next slide. So what would this look like? One more for me. Thank you. I have this, so, is it possible to click on that link? No worries. So, the video is embedded in the PowerPoint, and I'll see about sharing this at large as well.
Put it in the chat.
Oh, yeah, if you would put it in the chat, that would be wonderful. The Philadelphia School District has done this, and they have done this so successfully that they've been commended by the Council of Great City Schools. It's kind of an abstract process when you're just looking at it. So I think looking at, taking a little time to look at this case study, to see how other people did it, is a good one. I also have some background materials on the Anchorage School District and a few other school districts that have successfully implemented this. They're all a little different, which will give us a sense of the, kind of the array of ways that we can make sure that this process works well for this district. Can you advance, can we go back to the slides and advance again? Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. So, visions and goals, we're going to revisit it. Values and guardrails. Buffalo Public Schools' vision and goals, values and guardrails will help the board and everyone in Buffalo, especially our BPS community, to make decisions that will best support our students. So, we're going to bring in all of these pieces, the BPS vision, board vision and the education bargain, vision and values, shared core values and core beliefs, values and guardrails, and student achievement goals, which are goals. And so these are all the pieces, all the players in this process. They all have to work together. Okay? Can I have the next one? There you go. I just visualized it for you, kind of what this process could look like. Basically, these are all the pieces that have to go into it. So in order to create a vision and guardrails, we need to think about student values, parenting, caregiver values, administration values, teacher values, staff values, community values, BPS vision, board vision and the education bargain, because these are all the big pieces that need to be a part of it. And we can't have or meet our stakeholder needs unless we include all of these pieces. Okay, one more. There was a lot on that slide. So, BPS vision and guardrails and board and interim goals. So the idea is, we're going to have vision and guardrails, we're going to create board goals, three to five goals, and those can be broken down into interim goals, one to three goals. And the timeline recommended by the Council of Great City Schools is one to three years. It would depend on the goal and the interim goal in terms of our timeline. So not everything's going to be one year, not everything's going to be three years. What we want to look at is the feasibility. How long will it take before we can assess it appropriately? Because what we don't want to have happen is have one of these goals that are a really good goal, put it into place, assess it too soon, and maybe get rid of something that might be effective for us. Go ahead, next slide, please. Okay, and that's it for now. So I'd like to open it up for discussion among my colleagues, and I'd like to start at the top of the list with Ms. Belton Cotman.
Well, thank you, Dr. Rivera, for moving this forward this year. This is the result of a class that the board paid for me to attend, and I appreciate you moving this to the next level. I do have a question, however, because I'm, I see that you have listed that we will have the guardrails before the goals. And I need some clarity on that, because the guardrails, my understanding should be based on our goals as we move forward. And the other piece I would like clear is the community involvement piece. How do we move forward with that? The third question that I have is, is that the goals typically are due to the superintendent by the end of September. It's always been a struggle to do that. Are there going to be any goals put out this year before this, this is, this is put in place? I'm just trying to see where we are with the timeline for that.
These are excellent questions. I'm very glad you brought up all of them. So let me start at the top to talk about the goals and guardrails. I did put it first, because some of the documents that I had in front of me seem to indicate that guardrails will come first. That is something we can definitely move around, though. So if we want to do goals first and then put guardrails in place, I have no problem doing that at all. Each district did it a little differently, so I kind of wanted to just put up a draft version and we can have a conversation. So I just made a note about the goals and guardrails. What I'd like to do, if this makes sense, there we go, if this makes sense, I'd like to bring that up as one of our agenda items, as soon as we revisit it, next work session, we'll really dig into that piece of it, if that makes sense to you. Yeah? Okay, good. Excellent. Community involvement, that's another piece that we need to decide on as a board, exactly how that's going to work. So we do need to talk about a way to do that, how to get community involvement and what that looks like. I can say just personally, one of the things that I like is I like a variety of focus groups, I like a variety of surveys, I like to have kind of a multi-process, multimodal way of doing things. In other words, you gather feedback in different arenas, because you get different stakeholder voices depending on their comfort level. And so personally, that would be something I would advocate for. But again, as a board, I think this is something that we need to put on our agenda for next time and really dig down into exactly what that looks like. So that's my second answer. Any feedback on that so far?
No, no, it's fine. I agree. We're comfortable. I think that board members should consider having, hosting their own meetings, again, to pull their constituents. But the reason for that communication or that community involvement piece is for ownership, for the, we have ownership, and it's very important at this particular junction in our, in our district, that we, that our community feels that they have a say and that they have ownership in.
Absolutely. Could not have said it better. Thank you for that. And then with the goals, no, we're not going to wait all year for goals. So what I am proposing as a process is, we're going to go through this process to really get at the goals moving forward, so that, as you point out, there's been delays, it's been hard to get to them. What I really want to do is go through the entire process before we officially roll all of those pieces out, out of this process, because there's no way to be able to do this kind of deep work too soon. So what we'll be talking about very shortly is some goals for this year. And I, what, the timeline that I would like to have happen is, I would like to have this stuff started to be worked on over the next two sessions, if we can formally. I need to talk to the other chairs and see if they're willing to cede a little time to me. If they're not, that's okay. We'll work it out with the business meeting. You know, it's really up to them. But if they're willing to, we can talk about it next session, okay? If they're not willing to, that's okay. We can talk about it during the business session, and then we'll have stuff by the first week, my next executive affairs session, to formalize, and we'll be able to do that. What I don't want is to have goals that are just kind of put out there, and board members don't have time to look at it, to consider it, to think about it. And there's some pieces that I would like to do in terms of timelines, particularly with some of these goals, to have some agreed-upon timelines with the district in terms of when they're going to present on these items, particularly so we have more frequent feedback, more frequent data, and that it also aligns with, you know, state reporting as well, so we can really get a full picture of what's happening in this year as we're putting these things together.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you so much. You know,
You know, I just want to be clear that this is, this is what is happening in successful school districts. Fifty percent of the board time is focused in on student outcome. Okay, fifty percent. Okay, so that means that the board does not meet with that, at least without spending a large percentage of their time talking about what's going on with our students and outcome. And I'm looking forward to having that conversation. The piece with the guardrails, I would like to remind, or just add on that, the guardrails are the things that the community does not, or thou shall not, it comes from a, thou shall not do. Okay, thou shall not allow. And I think that community piece is going to satisfy, when we put those guardrails in place, it's going to satisfy a lot of people to know that the board is watching that. What has happened in successful districts, and I hope the board members that are interested in doing this, would at least read some of the work that the Council of Great City Schools has put out there and, and, and learn that if we're in order for us to grow this district in the right way, we have to do things a little differently. And spending the majority of our meetings not talking about student outcome and focus is just not going to get us there. So thank you for handling this. I'm, I'm very pleased that you're moving it forward this year, and I appreciate that. That's just one of the things that I've been able to contribute to the district over the years. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for sharing it. I really appreciate it. So with that, I'd like to move over to Dr. Evans-Brown.
So I have had an opportunity to review this work prior to your presentation today, Dr. Rivera. Thank you, Sharon, for sharing this information. I think it's real critical work that's been provided by the Council of Great City Schools. It's happening across New York State. And you're absolutely right when you talk about every core of what we do is predicated on our students in this district. What I did observe, and everybody probably have also, that this work is aligned with the district's student, I mean, bargain, the bargain, as well as the guiding, the guiding principles that are in place by the district. So that's a good thing. It's not like we're, we, we are recreating anything. As a board, we're taking more ownership of what we need to be doing. Also, I think we have begun to see some of the work that's being done. For example, in that last student achievement presentation, a district began to present on, you know, really robust work taking place in the district by looking at all those theories that they presented in the various components, as far as academics, as far as technology, as far as staff development, et cetera. So those were very innovative. And this year, it, it will lead to more student data and outcomes, and you'll see, hear some of that tonight. So that's all I have right now. Dr. Rivera, thank you for the great presentation.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it, and I made sure to make note of those pieces so we can bring them forward. Mr. Hurt, you have comments for us?
Yes, yes, thank you, Dr. Rivera, and thank you for putting together such a great presentation and the work of Sharon Felton-Cotman, taking the opportunity to go through the classwork and training to give this direction to the board. I do have a couple of questions. I need to start one off with a, with a, with a question to you. We're talking about our goals and guardrails. What does guardrails look like and how do we enforce guardrails before leaving, you know, going further into this?
That's an excellent question. So guardrails, so as Ms. Felton-Cotman made reference to in her comment, guardrails are the things you cannot do, right? You can't do certain things, and they often have to do with culture, right? And it has to do with culture and values. So, for example, one of the things that Philadelphia used for their guardrails was everything must be equity focused. So in other words, the superintendent may not make school admissions decisions that are not equity focused. It's like that. But the thing is, is that it's not just focused on the superintendent, it's focused on the district and the community at large. So that's why Ms. Felton-Cotman was talking about the fact that you need to have community input in order to make the guardrails, because what they are is they're, they're basically the boundaries around what we're doing. So they're agreed boundaries that we won't go past based on what our shared values are as a large community.
Okay, thank you. Great, good answer. So I've been looking at guardrails for the community, the school board, and the superintendent, and how do we enforce those?
Not necessarily. So what this is, this is about the board. This is about the decisions being made at the board and where the guardrails are going to flow. What's going to happen is our decision-making process, when we have things on the table, you know? So for example, if we're trying to tackle, we're trying to tackle suspension rates, or we're trying to deal with social emotional issues, we're trying to deal with an issue that may bubble up from the community, we can use our guardrails and our goals, primarily our goals, but then the guardrails are going to help us decide on the how, the things that we, we won't do in order to achieve something, because then we always have to preserve our values. And then when it's budgeting time, this stuff becomes really, really important because what we do with our budget, how we resource these things, has to be guided by our values and our guardrails. And so it helps our decision-making process become clearer in terms of what decisions we have to make, because sometimes we do have to make very hard decisions. And so we use those guardrails, the, actually, really, it's all of them. You can't just focus on the guardrails, you know, because it's supposed to work all together. You use your vision, your goals, and your guardrails to make those difficult decisions.
The reason why I ask you this question is because you reflect, you know, you're paying this, this guardrails is for the board. As an African-American male, and the only African-American male that sits on this school board at our chair in the city of Buffalo, I have taken a lot of calls over the last couple of months, and particularly the last two weeks, and just seeing disparity in things that's been happening. My concern is the guardrails and how do we imply those and, and how do we look to enforce them? I want to know what can we do to make it enforceable legally and as a board voting together, you know, to, to try to make certain things enforceable. I'm not saying pull things out right now, but it's been a, a lot of character references about certain people, certain individuals, and, and administration about, you know, conduct and acts. And, and I think that's the great proponent, because most of the stuff that's here, as we're talking about putting together student force, outcome, and governance, and equality, this is stuff that we've been practicing already, and this already in education bargain. So I'd like to know what different this one offered to us than what we already have been practicing before, and what guardrails can be put in place to, to, to have a more feasible board, a more active board?
Well, that's a part, so that's a part of what guardrails do, is it makes it a more functional board, because it's stuff that we commit to as a board as we move forward. So I'd like to give you a specific example, but one of the things I don't really want to do is to give you an example that maybe the board isn't all on board with, because, for example, this is kind of a personal guardrail of mine, is that I feel that all of these decisions have to be achieved through consensus, just personally, in terms of the way that I work. So the decisions that I make, where I choose to act in certain ways, are going to be guided by that. And if for some reason, by accident or on purpose, I go past that personal guardrail of achieving consensus, I have to pull back that action. I have to recognize that I went outside of that boundary and that it needs to be fixed. So it's less about legally enforceable, to my mind, and within my reading, and it's much more about knowing when we actually need to act on something, especially if it's violated a guardrail. Okay?
So.
And we will do this, so I, my pledge to you, because I hear what your concern is, your concern, I think I hear what your concern is. I'm going to say it, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
You don't have to.
But, all I was going to say, oh, no, no, not that piece. All I wanted to say was, is that what I hear, what I'm hearing from you is you want something that's actionable, that it's not just more kind of stuff out there, but it's stuff that we are actually going to use and work on. That's what I'm kind of hearing at the base of some of that question. And the guardrails are supposed to be actionable and usable. I hope that reassures a little bit of it.
Yes, it does. This is really stating, you know, my question, because most of the stuff that I read in the document, and, you know, it's basically what we're practicing now, and what can happen. And if I, you know, looking under our judicial system of checks and balances.
Sure.
We have House Representative, Congress, the Senate, checks and balances to, to monitor the things that the president doing to one another and how votes are controlled. I don't see that here.
Currently or in the plan?
Currently. Currently, I don't see that here with the Buffalo School Board, and I don't see that here with administrative staff members. So it's kind of like, I'm really not going to go too far into it, but it's kind of like the shootout about what's being displayed, what's happening, what, what attitude the board is giving to, to the community, what's our plight, or what's our goals, and everything that happens, are we even working towards achieving our goals?
Right. So especially that last piece, are we working towards achieving our goals? This process is supposed to guarantee that. And really, remember the piece I was saying about strategy and communication, there was a lot that they threw all at once, and going through it again, it was mostly clear, but there's some places, I think, that are still in some gray areas that really need to be pulled out and worked on. This is one of them, is that strategy and communication, in terms of what is our strategy, what are our goals, what are our guardrails, and how do we communicate them, should deal and, and move us forward into, into being in that place that you want us to be in, in other words, and I think that all of us want to be in, in terms of really focusing on our student achievement, making sure that we're working towards really achievable things and that we can demonstrate it. I'm looking forward to further conversations with you. This is not the last one. We're going to keep doing this.
Okay, my last question, not, not told everything. Sharon Felton-Cotman mentioned community involvement, which I'm very, very strong in.
Yes.
Community from, from all sides of the Buffalo, north, south, east, and west.
Absolutely.
And also, I'd like to add in teacher involvement and the administration involvement also, because that wasn't included.
Absolutely. It was, actually, but the slide was not very legible.
Okay.
So, but it is, and I am absolutely on the same page with you. That needs to be there. You're right, because they're a part of the community, they're really, you know, they're the center of who works with, with BPS children, our children, and we need them as part of this.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Ms. Jay, you're up next, if you have a comment or a question for me and for the board at large.
Can you hear me?
Certainly can.
Oh.
Worked out.
All right. Well, Ann, I really appreciate your presentation. It was very thorough. I apologize because I was late, so I didn't hear the, the beginning, but because I was involved in this work very early on with the last board, I'm very familiar with, with everything that, this initiative, and I'm really glad that it's been resurrected, because this is something that we were very invested in with the last board, and it kind of got lost. So it, I'm, I'm glad to see that we are, are moving this forward.
Thank you very much. I, I have to say, the, the good work that has come before me and the good work of my fellow members has made this very possible, and I really appreciate the spirit of collegiality that we're sharing with all of this. Ms. McCossey, do you have a comment or a question for us? I'll come, oh, no, there you are. Hi.
Sorry, I, I'm, sorry about that.
It's, it's.
So I'm not gonna, I'm not going to repeat anything that's been said. I agree with hope that, you know, I'm glad this is, I'm glad you've taken this on and are, are taking this to every, and, and really focusing on all aspects of this work, the fact that there has to be resources and everything in play. You can't set goals without having the accountability piece and the resources to make that happen, which means that the board and the district have to work hand in hand. So that communication is definitely real. Just for a heads up, when it comes to community engagement, I had mentioned before that I had a plan in place that had been presented and ran by Dr. Mona Reynolds and the executive team. I'm tweaking some pieces, but it does involve speaking to different constituencies as well as doing, you know, I, I host meetings and events in my district that will continue, but as a general, these are, the constituencies will be reached separately, which would be our parents and caregivers, students, teachers and administration, businesses, CBOs, colleges, the parent congress itself, seeing that it's such a community-based entity, and, and I believe there's one more, or no, that, I think that covers it all. But you all will be once it's tweaked and again approved by the, by the executive team, that I'll be presenting that to you very shortly. It's pretty much all, you know, put together. And thank you again, President Petrucci, for pointing out the different policy pieces that go hand in hand with the community outreach that we're trying to do as a district. So this plan is working with the district, as they're going to be an equal part of putting this together, and also involves so many different constituencies that we deal with on a regular. And then, again, as mentioned earlier, I believe that we should really support each other in how we reach out to our districts, you know, whether town hall meetings or whatever, and be in support of each other's events and each other's efforts to show some unity on the board. But other than that, Ann, great work. I really appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you as well. I appreciate this strategy, too. I think a lot of the work that we're doing is going to dovetail very nicely, and I'm looking forward to, to working more with you and with my colleagues on the board in gathering the really important information. President Petrusi, you were next on my list.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I, first of all, I just want to just recognize Sharon and thank her for continuing this work and handing the tone over to you. I, I know that's been a long, it's been a long journey. I also realize, and I encourage my fellow board members, that if you have the opportunity, check out the materials that the Council of Great City Schools puts out. They are, there's a wealth of knowledge on all kinds of different topics. They are a great resource for the district to use. I just have one question. I was wondering if you could maybe provide an example for the listening public and for our fellow board members. So what would a one, two, and a three-year goal look like, and how would they be disaggregated and then reintegrated?
Ah, that is an excellent question. So, an example of a one, two, and three-year goal, so let's talk about attendance, for example. Attendance is probably a really good and timely piece right now. So a one-year goal with attendance coming out of the COVID pandemic, those numbers and those outcomes are going to be slightly different, because what you want to see is what's achievable. So you'd get the baseline for the number of students not attending at this moment, and maybe do some needs assessment of it, in other words, or some root cause analysis in terms of why aren't they attending? What's happening? Where are we getting these numbers from? And then establishing an achievable goal with an eye towards getting much higher. So in other words, a one-year goal is really going to be an interim goal in attendance. So you would want to move the needle forward, get more students back attending throughout that first year, then the second year, you're going to build further on that, and the third year, you may very well get up to where you really want to be. And so the idea is, is you're doing achievable goals while you're still setting clearly what goals you want to reach and where, where, basically, it's the how. Those interim goals are how we know that we're getting to where we need to be in whatever we're looking for.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Scott, you're up next on my list.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Just want to commend you for all this work and for those that have been involved in forming it fast and present. I think it's, it's very thoughtful, it's studied, it's strategic, and it really gears us to focusing more on student achievement and outcomes. That's, I think we all agree, we need to spend far more time on student achievement and outcomes. That's what's going to have the most impact on our students and our families throughout the city. our families throughout the city. And I want to just, I don't have any questions, just commenting. I want to also piggyback on what Dr. Kathy Evans Brown shared, that I think our last student achievement work session, most of it really was kind of showing some of this work. It was a deep, in-depth presentation on students and services and supports for our students, various supports for our students. So you mentioned access and just having access alone is not actually being equitable and actually obtaining what we want for each of our students. And you need to have those supports and services in place. So I agree with Dr. Kathy Evans Brown that this work has begun and I like how there's some structure with the guardrails to kind of keep us focused. And I look forward to how this, this work transpires as we move forward.
Thank you very much. I agree with that as well. And then Ms. Woods, I wanted to give you the opportunity.
Paula Dastie has been called.
Okay, I hope all is well. So I will, I will follow up with her individually also just to make sure everybody's on the same page. So I did promise a second round I'm going to go through, but I would like us to have a hard stop at 6:10 in order to make sure that we have enough time to move over to student achievement. So I'm going to go ahead. I'm going to go down my list again, exactly the same way. Everybody's going to have an opportunity. If you do not have anything more that you would like to add, we can say pass and I'll just move on to the next person. Ms. Felton Cotman?
Thank you. Briefly, so last year, Lou Petrucci put together some goals. Is that information going to be shared? Is this PowerPoint going to be shared? I'm not sure what's going on with that, but there were some goals put together last year, at least something to start with, for board members to take a look at. So I would like to have a copy of those again. Thank you.
Certainly, I'll make a note of it. And the answer is yes. So we will, we will move forward with that as well. Okay. Dr. Evans Brown?
Pass.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Hurd?
Yes, thank you. I was, I posted, mentioned that Paula Woods had a family emergency and she won't be able to attend tonight.
Well, our thoughts are with her.
Say that, that please give her, update what's going on and prayers are with her.
I am absolutely happy to do that. My prayers are with her as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jay? No, you're good. Okay, pass. Ms. McCossey?
I'm good as well. Pass.
Thank you, Ms. President Petrusi.
No, thank you, Dr. Rivera. I'm fine.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Scott.
I'm also.
Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate your kind attention as well as your very thoughtful comments. And I look forward to working with you as we move forward with this. And I believe that ends our executive affairs session. Thank you very much. So what's our next question? Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Evans Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So that was pretty timely. This next session for student achievement is on assessment and attendance data. I know we touched bases last week with theories. And we want to, you know, here's the work. This is what, the work that we want to see that our students have just gotten back into in-person learning. And there have been some lost learning. And parents want to know, we want to know what assessments are happening, where our kids are, you know, in terms of, you know, moving forward past this pandemic. The pandemic is still here, but they're in school with the student learning. Are they being remediated? Is it accelerated, et cetera? So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Klandor Cash, our superintendent, to open up the presentation on assessment and attendance data. Dr. Cash?
Good evening, colleagues. Thank you, Dr. Kathy Evans Brown. I want to make a number of comments about this focus on student outcomes, student achievement and the like, as a preamble to this discussion that's going to be going forward now. Certainly, throughout the course of this administration and with, with the staffs that I've had to serve with me, we always set the very highest bar, the very highest standard for student achievement, as based on test scores. But much more than that, much, much more than that. And sort of the whole child supports, the wraparound, social, emotional supports that are so important for many of our children. And all of the achievements that you have seen over the past six years that have been reported out in boardwork sessions and in annual meetings and meetings like this. So those have to be taken into consideration as well because that represents student achievement. That represents a focus on student outcomes that you can get to page 57 and talk about the quadratic equation before you address some of the underlying issues and needs that our students are presenting. And so that's always how we've approached the work as part of our theory of action. And the Council of Great City Schools does say that an advanced theory of action in your work is important first step. I think, Dr. Rivera, that it was at the stage of three out of four. You had stage one, which was beginning. You had stage two, which was moving in the right direction. You had stage three, which was good, but you had stage four, which was advanced. And I think we're between, somewhere between two, heading to three now. And that's what this work is all about. Now, I want to say at the outset that I'm going to have a discussion with the commissioner tomorrow, Commissioner Rosa, and the big five superintendents. Because we have a number of concerns that I don't think have been aligned in the state as we begin to come back to in-person learning five days a week, every week. So I'm going to be asking about the three through eight, grades three through eight, New York, English and language arts and math, state assessments. How are those going to be administered this year? Because the last time they were field tested, the last time they were, in other words, made valid for New York State's population of students was two years ago. And we have two years hence with students at home and in, in remote learning. And I think my, my strong belief as a, not only curriculum specialist, but as a evaluation and testing specialist, is that these, these tests need to be recalibrated. They need to be re-field tested in order to address the needs that I'm seeing across our district in these first several weeks of school. And so I know it's true across the state. That's the grade three through eight ELA and math assessments. Same is true for Regents assessments. Same is true for attendance. When we talk about ADA and what that actually means, which you'll hear about what that means, the definition of it and how we're being challenged. Again, I don't believe it's just a Buffalo issue, but all across the state with adhering to a strict definition of attendance and then expecting to have outcomes that are in the 90, 95% at least early on. I think it's good aspiration, but early on, there's going to be challenges to that. And we're going to tell, talk to you about why. But ADA statistics affect our funding. And so I want to talk again to the commissioner, and I believe big five superintendents have indicated in, in the pre-agenda that they, that they agree that how will ADA be determined and will it be adjusted, given the significant disruptions that are occurring in a concentric circle way based on the pandemic, the ongoing pandemic. So it's not just about taking out state tests, looking at them and seeing if you're improving where you need to, especially two-year-old tests. This will be the last year of three through eight assessments under this era of the state test. Next year, they'll be changing to what was called next gen standards. And so they'll be recalibrating and resetting the baseline once again for the state. I just don't want to just set goals, you know, without very thoughtful and deep discussions about these important assessment issues. I think that the state assessments in New York State college are inherently discriminatory. I don't think that they test and help us understand well what students can and cannot do. Because students don't have the equity and access and opportunity of education all across the state. And that's what we're trying to do better about. But it's still not, they're going to want to be reflected. So in any given year, under these state assessments, you're going to see some significant disparity about where our children are and what they can and can't do. So I just want to caution you about that before we get deep into it. And that's why we're going to have a multiple assessment approach to how we determine student progress, student acceleration. But before we get there, we have to deal with student healing. And we are seeing a significant amount of challenges that our students are bringing to school and that we need to be supportive and helpful in helping them become re-acclimated to school, to daily schooling. Big, big challenges that we're under. And I want to commend staff. I want to commend our principals, our teachers for how hard they're working on the restorative realm with our students versus the punitive and disciplinary realm. There are some, there are things that we have to do, where we have to have, where we have flagrant violations, we have to suspend students. We have to address behavior. But we're trying to err on the side of listening and holding meetings, restorative meetings with students to try to help them understand that if they make a mistake, they can recover and still have a bright, a bright future. But I can tell you, every day I'm, I'm hearing seven to 10 incidents and issues that are occurring out in among our schools. So we, so with just a flat percentage increase or decrease without a thoughtful understanding of the context, it, it won't be sufficient for me to, to end this discussion. So I just wanted to have a preamble about that. And today, until I hear when the state might release some data that we can talk about and have, have district to district comparisons, have charter school, public school comparisons all made available publicly, then we have to work on internal and rely on internal assessments that we have been doing all summer and into these first few weeks of school. So we'll have two examples. One is Anne Botticelli and her team will talk about sort of what we are doing in the, in the realm of student achievement. And she has a presentation of several slides for you. And then Ebony Bullock will kind of give us a case study. She'll give us an example of just what I've been talking about with regard to student attendance. So far, the ADA that we're seeing with our students thus far in the school year. And we'll, we'll look forward to having a discussion about it after. Not very many slides, won't take long. And then you'll have the rest of your time, Dr. Kathy Evans Brown, to focus on, on discussion. Does that make sense? All right. Ms. Botticelli, you're up.
Great. Anne, can you pull up the presentation, please? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to speak today about some of the great things happening in our classrooms. I wanted to specifically address some of the things that we're doing in line. So actually, if you take a look at the picture of the little, beautiful little girl on the left, she is a third grader at 65, and she is showcasing one of the brand new instruments that she has received as part of our initiative to increase music, instrumental music at the lower grades. So she'll be using that throughout the year, learning how to play the violin. And you can tell she's very excited. And we have our new staff on board at the ECCs. So the program will be underway very soon. They are currently working with the students to recruit music lessons and the instruments are arriving as we speak. You can also see on this slide several examples of our All About Me charts. So every year, many of the schools do an All About Me activity to, so teachers can get to know their students, students can get to know one another and showcase the special things about themselves. And the one I want to particularly call your attention to is sort of in the middle, and that is from School 18. And they did a, a All About Me math exercise. So each student had to describe themselves in terms of mathematics. And it's, it's really hard to see because it's small here, but some of them explained their favorite number and created number bonds. So they really took a unique slant on it this year. Okay, Anne, next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about some data that you'll be seeing. So the, actually the literacy screener is just closing now. So we don't have the data available for this evening, but we, we will have it soon. So I just wanted to explain the data that you will see as soon as we're able to provide it for you. So our universal screening measure for literacy, K6, is the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills, or you've probably heard it called DIBELS. So DIBELS, again, is a universal screener, meaning that we use it with every single student in our K6 classrooms. It measures the big ideas of reading. So it focuses on phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, comprehension, and it gives us a baseline. You need to dig a little deeper with certain students to understand what might be preventing them from proficiency. So when that is the case, we might administer something like the PAST, the phonemic awareness screening test, which is new to us this year. So in this particular case, if a student is struggling with phonemic awareness, we'll use the PAST to help diagnose what the particular concern might be, and then teachers can intervene. So first, we administer that universal screening measure. And then when we recognize that a student might not be at proficiency, we'll go a little bit deeper with a diagnostic tool. I mentioned the PAST in this case because it is tightly aligned with both letters and Orton Gillingham, which are two major professional development opportunities we've been providing to our elementary teachers. So you know that we've been doing letters for several, several years, and we're expanding it this year up to grade four. Letters provides teachers with a deep, deep scientific basis for understanding reading. Our new professional development opportunity, Orton Gilling, makes that theory that letters has developed and builds on it and gives teachers a practical application. So right now, we've been training our reading teachers in Orton Gillingham so they can intervene with any student who might be struggling with literacy skills. But we are also providing all of our special education teachers with Orton Gillingham training over the course of the next two years. So that way, we'll be able to not only service students who might need intervention prior to a referral, but we'll be able to work with students who are already identified as special education and need that additional support. Specifically, students with dyslexia benefit from this particular program, but across the board, all students do benefit from that structured literacy basis. Anne, your next slide, please. And then we also do universal screening for mathematics. And this year, we've adopted a new program called iReady. This is actually an adaptive assessment that we're going to use in grades K through eight. So when I say adaptive, the, the test is struggling, and it will change the level of questioning so that it can pinpoint exactly where that student is in, in their performance. It can also accelerate the types of questions that are being asked as well. So it's going to measure the main skills for, the main math domains of number and operations. So it's going to measure the main skills, the main math domains of number and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement, data, and geometry. So it'll tell us the approximate level that a student is performing at on those four domains. It gives the kids a stretch gap so that we can help close the gap, and it will provide really, really targeted reports for teachers so they can drill down into individual student data and help the students accelerate their growth. So that, we're very excited to use this new assessment. It'll be replacing Star Math. So now we'll have two very solid screeners in place for both literacy and mathematics. The iReady window is opening very soon, so we'll have that data in about a month. Also, we're providing additional training to support mathematics implementation at the school level. So we have numbers that will be over the next three years with our elementary teachers. It's a bit of a parallel to letters. And I think we told you about the exciting Gates Grant that we received. So we'll be working with grade six teachers, and they really support kids in that transition between elementary math and the more advanced math that they're going to encounter in seventh grade. So that sixth-grade year is really pivotal for our students and for our teachers to make sure that they have a solid content understanding. Next slide, please. So I talked about our theory of action, and part of our theory of action is addressing advanced coursework at the middle level. So I took some snapshots that schools have provided for us, just so you could see what's happening at the building level. So you can see that we've been increasing the number of Regents-level courses that we offer in our middle schools. You can see some snapshots of a living environment class, some algebra classes, an exciting new class we're offering at School 19 for Indigenous languages. The district, students in World Language in Grade Eight can accrue Regents-level credit. They don't have a Regents exam per se in World Language, but that's a high school credit they are accumulating if they successfully pass the coursework and the exam this year. The same with the Algebra and Science courses. Students can accrue Regents-level coursework to go toward their high school careers. Next slide, please. And just, you know, as long as we're talking about algebra, I just wanted to point out how wonderful it is to see those graphing calculators in use. You approved this purchase for our students so that they would have a one-to-one deployment in algebra. So the students pictured here are using their graphing calculators, and on the whiteboard, you can see the teacher has a navigator. So the teacher can actually showcase each student in the room and monitor their work on the graphing calculator. So that's a really useful tool for teachers to support the students. And you can also see to the left, a boy using i, which is the new algebra invention we have purchased. So this is the first year that most schools will be using iXL, and you can see they've already dove right in. They're very excited. It will not only help students who are a little struggling with some skills that are more of a pre-algebra style, but also provide on-grade-level support for students in the algebra course itself. So together with MobiMax, that's a really rich resource for our teachers. Next slide, please. And we talked a bit about the dual enrollment initiative that we have. We're partnering with ECC to pilot a couple courses this year, and we're really excited. So we've got an African-American history course going at 156, 198, 301, and 366, and we're piloting the African-American literature course, also at 156, Performing Arts, DaVinci and McKinley. So you can see a few snapshots here of the two courses. They're very well-attended, students are really excited, teachers are really excited. Here's conclude with the professors at ECC to make sure that we are aligned and we have an excellent delivery of the information. So we're hoping that these will be very successful this year, and we can expand them to other schools across the district. We also, just as an FYI, we have many, many dual enrollment courses with ECC for CTE, so we're hoping to continue to expand our work with them. So again, our students who successfully enroll and pass these courses will actually receive free college credits from ECC that are transferable. Next slide, please. And we've talked a little bit about our college transition course. So this is also very exciting. Right now, we have 507 students at 14 different schools enrolled in the college transition course this year. So we partnered with different colleges in the area to create this course, and so it's sort of a Part One at the high school level and a Part Two at the go-to those institutions. So through this course, students not only learn how to complete their college applications, but also financial aid and how to apply for scholarships. They'll complete a research project throughout the course of the class itself. They learn skills like time management, they learn to understand the value of working with different people, various backgrounds and cultures. They learn to manage money and to create a budget, because when they're on their own in college, we know how important that can be. And especially being on your own in school, you want to be able to maintain a healthy lifestyle. Those are just some of the things that they'll work on throughout the course of the year. It's actually a one-semester course, but it's very, very powerful. So far, we've gotten great traction with the kids, and we're really excited. We hope that this will support them as they move forward with their next adventure. Next slide, please. So you've heard me talk plenty of times about our Advanced Placement Initiative, but I just wanted to give... So we are about to finalize our contract with Equal Opportunity Schools. That group will be working with many of our high schools to increase the enrollment of underserved populations in our advanced courses, so both APs and dual enrollment courses. You can see a list up at the top of the different offerings that we have for AP right now, and a little bit later, I'm going to show you a list of our dual enrollment offerings. But you can see that we've continued to expand these over time, so we're making great headway. And this year, MST and HUCH were actually awarded the designation of AP capstone schools. So we're very excited about that pilot. They will be offering two AP courses in sequence. So this year, the kids will start with AP Seminar, and then next year, they'll take Part Two, which is an AP research course. And we know that these capstone courses are going to prepare the kids for college. We're extremely excited, and we're hopeful that we can increase the enrollment across other schools. Next slide, please. And I'm just going to briefly mention staff development. Actually, at the next board meeting, approve our professional development for the year, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. To the left, you can see a couple snapshots of our new teacher orientation, so some of our staff members working with the new hires. And you know that we are always planning for Superintendent Conference Day opportunities. Our Staff Development Department releases a yearly calendar and catalog of opportunities throughout the course of the workday, but we also have after-school and Saturday offerings. We have a mentoring program, and we're hiring a new mentor to add to that team. We provide new teacher orientation, but we also provide new teacher academy. So we spend time working with teachers in their first three years to really support them so that we can retain them as professionals in our district. Okay, Admire, next slide, please, and I think you're going to have to turn it over to me at this point. So I also just wanted to briefly introduce our new online course catalog. There's been a lot of work that has gone into refining our curriculum, developing new courses, creating new partnerships with local colleges. You've seen how much our AP program has expanded over the... The new catalog will be online, and it's going to help families make informed choices as they help their students complete high school applications and think through college and career pathways. So Admire, if you don't mind, I'm going to take over the screen. Let's see. Hold on one second. I am not sure if I'm sharing the right screen here. Looks like I shared that screen back, so give me one second. So I'm hoping that you can see what looks like a catalog. Can everyone see that right now? Yes? Okay, great. So we are going online with our college, excuse me, our high school course catalog this year, which is a listing of all of the courses available in the district. This hasn't gone live yet, so you're getting the sneak peek. Hopefully, it'll be live next week. But we wanted parents and students to have the opportunity to see what's available at our high school level. So I'm just going to show you a couple examples. I mentioned our dual-credit courses, dual enrollment. This is just a quick snapshot of what we have to offer. So you can see all of these courses. They may be specific to a particular building, they might be general across the district, but these are opportunities for students to earn dual credit, both a high school credit toward graduation and college credits as well. So you can see we have numerous opportunities in the district in addition to things like Advanced Placement. And the ones listed at the end are our new opportunities with Hilbert College, which we're very excited that kids who are successful in their coursework for AP also have the potential opportunity to earn college credit through Hilbert. So that's really exciting. I talked about ECC, but this is a similar initiative. And I'm just going to show you a sample. So here's our Social Studies Department, and you can see the various course offerings, the core, the things that you might see in a typical sequence, like Global History, US History, Participation in Government, and Economics. But then we also have various electives, like Understanding the Street Law, Sociology, Psychology. The new course that Dr. Morell has been talking about, we're very excited, for Puerto Rican History and Culture. We have African-American Studies, and we have a new African-American History course, dual-credit with ECC, our Social Justice course, and numerous Advanced Placement courses, as well as the International Baccalaureate courses. So that's just a snapshot of what is available for students as they enroll in our high schools. Some courses, again, are specific to certain schools, for example, a CTE track, but other courses are offered across the district. It varies depending on the student desires. So when they sign up for courses, what are they asking for? What APs will they be able to offer at the school level? But there's many opportunities as well to cross-enroll and have students take courses that are offered at other schools. So we're hopeful that the course catalog will really help families make informed decisions as they complete their high school applications. Thank you. And Admire, I'm going to turn it back to you so that Ebony can take over.
Colleagues, I would suggest we break. Could we hold on that Admire presentation? I thought this was such a fabulous and exciting presentation that Ms. Botticelli just presented to give you insight on some of the courses, some of the processes and the approaches that we are taking to provide greater equity and opportunity and access and quality for all of our students. That's what you just got a flavor of, and that's what the work is all about before you start determining what measures that, because that's a more complex conversation. But I think, Anne, where is it? Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, if you could take your questions to that pace that whatever you do, Dr. Anne Rivera did, this is a good time to do that for this, and then we'll tee up ADA.
All right, thank you. So summarily, I will ask each board member, starting with Sharon Belton-Cotman. I might get off track, so if I call your name, that's who I want to see. Sharon, you can go first. Do you have any questions or comments as regards to this presentation?
Thank you, Ms. Botticelli, for your presentation. The schools for your math program, the grant that was given, I just would like, when I was looking at it a couple of days ago, it didn't seem to have any classes or any of the West Side. Did we include any West Side schools in there? I didn't know it was for grade six. At that point, it didn't stick.
I'm sorry, I don't have that list handy, but I can definitely get it and send it to you. When they looked at it, they were originally trying to make sure to hit the TSI/CSI schools and then schools that would need that level of support. But there's also a second cohort, so I think I only shared the first cohort with you. Then there'll be a second cohort.
Okay, thanks. That's all I was concerned with. Thank you. I'm just doing the equity monitoring, that's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Sharon Cotman. Any questions, comments?
Sorry, that's all on me. My apologies.
My question also about the Gate Grants, about which schools that uses the grant. I didn't see that list. If you can email that back to me so I can just check over that. And that algebra program that we use with the graphic calculators, will that also support Algebra II classes?
That is a great question. I'll verify for you. I know it went to the Algebra courses, Algebra I. I'm not positive about Algebra II, so I can check.
Okay. I'm doing a wonderful job of getting these programs out to the schools and with AP classes and IB classes. I'd just like to know, what process do we have in place about parents who want their children to go to these specific programs, and how can we make sure that when they apply to these schools, they have all this information and that they can also, you know, register their children in schools that's performing on higher levels?
Well, so our goal with the course catalog is to provide information to families about what is available. Many of the AP courses, though, might change from year to year. So depending on the student requests at a school, they might offer, say, AP Psychology or another year, because maybe another class rises to the surface when they look at their requests. So they're really trying to tailor the courses that they offer to the needs and desires of the students. However, we do have opportunities for students to cross-enroll, so if the schedule is aligned, you might be able to take an AP course that's not offered at your building but is perhaps offered somewhere else. So we do have a handful of students that access courses that way as well.
So we do have virtual opportunities for children to cross schools?
Depending, many... So yes, the two school schedules would have to align close enough that they'd be able to do that, but we do have other opportunities as well. But again, sometimes the AP offerings change year to year, so depending on what school you're at, it might be a little different each time.
Thank you, Ms. Botticelli.
You're welcome.
And question, is the course catalog, online courses only?
No, the catalog itself is online.
Okay.
But those courses are mostly brick and mortar. In the course code itself, there's actually a designation that will tell someone if it's virtual or not virtual.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right, next up is Board Member Jen McCosey.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Botticelli. That is some really good work and very succinct. We can figure out exactly where everything is. My question is, I literally just have one based off of what you had mentioned. I know we refer to students and garner their input as to presenting these and coming up with these different courses, but I'd really like to know, just for constituent's sake, how we go about that. Is it a survey that's across all the schools in the district? Is it during SBMT meetings, they create a strategy in order to garner their student voices? Like, is it basically a district-wide effort, or is it upon each individual school to find the student voices? And I say this because we want... I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I would love to know that the same effort, not saying some schools will and some schools won't, but the same effort as far as gauging how much is being done is being done across the district, like we set a power of how we reach our students, and then you can, you know, raise that bar or whatever according to schools. So I'm curious as to that. And then also, the courses, you know, in the future, if we look into other courses, a lot of the questions that I get from students... a lot of the questions that I get from students, from families, is especially in the West District, is around the immigrant refugee population. When did the Buffalo start bringing all these folks in? How did this change the climate for the schools? Like, people really want to know the history when they talk about Buffalo. And I don't know, of course, it might be in a more advanced grade. But if we're going to look into courses, one that might, you know, really circumvent how Buffalo has changed over the last 30 years and really get into detail about how folks started coming in and leaving and, you know, the way that certain groups going into North Buffalo and then leaving all these folks, you know, a lot of houses abandoned on the West. Like, this is, it seems trivial, but it is so key to explaining how this has happened in Buffalo. And we're such a focal, even on a national level, around our diversity, especially within one side. So I just would like to see a little more of that maybe concentrated within, when we talk about different cultures, we'll be really bringing in so many different cultures just based on that conversation.
Sure.
That's the one comment I really wanted to put out there.
I'm not sure if you meant for adults or if you meant for students. But I realize, as I showed the social studies course catalog, one of our courses is missing because we actually do have a history of Buffalo course. So I can verify in the curriculum how extensive it is in terms of the new immigrant groups that have come over time. But I know that that is a course offering that is available. So I'll verify with Mr. Brandy whether it covers the topics you're discussing. But in terms of teachers, we actually did offer training recently through our Superintendent Conference Day. We have a self-paced offering on the refugee process. And we do many courses on cultural considerations. So for example, we've recently done some on the Taguina-speaking students, Somali. We're working on a few others. We have Burmese. I believe we have Karin. So we're working on a cultural consideration series to help our teachers better understand the students they serve. But if you're talking about something to the public, we could also work with the multilingual department on that.
Yeah, I mean, just based on talking about that, and I won't belabor the point, but having the opportunities in our community schools for those groups, there's groups that, you know, represent all these different cultures that would love to be able to show, not just showcase, but also be able to show folk how to communicate with them. Some folks are better, you know, around maybe just food as opposed to actually learning a language. There's so many different aspects of communication with different cultures. And if we can get these leaders of these organizations to be able to reach out in our community schools, north, south, east, west, to create that kind of unity piece that we're looking to do as a district, that would be awesome.
Sure. I'm sure that they would actually love to come work with our community schools. So that would be great. And, you know, it's a little different than what you're asking, but I didn't mention Heritage Academies as well. So those will be starting up soon, and they're in, I want to say, our top seven languages, including Seneca this year. So we're excited to have those start up as well. And your first question, I believe, was about how courses are determined. So I guess it's kind of multifaceted. We are often...
With the student voice, that immediately hit home with me is how the students, you know, how deep is their input in order to bring a course to fruition? And then also, like, what is the strategy in order to garner their input?
Right. So knowing that we want a teacher who's trained in the coursework, we continue to offer opportunities to get our teachers trained in courses. So we'll have, for the next two summers, we'll have more advanced placement training for teachers so that they have a bigger and bigger pool at the school level to offer certain courses. And then in terms of student voice, Equal Opportunity Schools actually works with the school to survey every student in the building. And some of the questions that they're asked is, what types of things are you interested in? Have you ever discussed AP with anyone at the building? Or anyone, I guess, in general? Do you have a trusted adult who you can talk to about these things? You know, what kind of course would you like to see offered at the building? So they actually create a student profile for every single student based on their responses to the survey and including other factors that would be pertinent to making decisions. And the schools use that information to determine to offer each year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hope J., question or a comment?
So Anne, the only question that I have, I'm listening to your presentation and listening to the questions that other people are asking. And I kind of want to go back to how we offer these opportunities to our students. I know that you have said that they're mostly brick and mortar, but that some of them may have a virtual possibility. But it seems to me that in the world that we're living in now, that we should be moving toward offering, you know, these courses virtually. And that students in every building should have the same opportunities. I mean, that's like the whole equity argument. And it seems to me that we have the technology now, and we've been doing this. And I just don't know why we're not putting, you know, a lot of focus and energy and effort into, you know, moving in that direction. I was having a conversation just today with a neighbor who lives on my street. And, you know, one of her comments was, why didn't Buffalo offer a virtual option this year? And, you know, I know that we have it available for kids with medical exemptions. But I guess, my question is, you know, it's the future. And I think that oftentimes, you know, we sit here and we talk about, well, they're offered it, you know, in certain schools and at the, you know, other schools don't have these options available. And so, you know, and it's been an equity argument so all along, but it doesn't have to be if we offer it in a virtual space and everybody has equal access. So that's, you know, that's my only thought, my only comment is, are we looking to move in that direction?
So IT is actually purchasing some of the technology that's, that would help. We've been doing what we call learning live for several years. So typically, most students would want to take the course at their own school. But when it's not available, we definitely do have students looping into other classrooms. So we've trained our teachers, our AP teachers in the past, on the best ways to work with students who are actually at a different building but are logging into your class, that concurrent model that we used so much last year. So a lot of our AP teachers are actually very fluent with that. We also have a few opportunities for blended learning. So we have, I'll double-check about this year, but I know in years past, we've had an English teacher who cycles through buildings because the kids take the course online. And then she will go in and work with them so they have that in-person contact, but it's actually an online AP course. So we have explored those opportunities. And we keep increasing the number of courses available at every building. So it's not, like, in the early stages of our initiative, there might have only been one class at your school. But many of our buildings are at the five course or above. So it depends on each school. But we do, we try to explore as many of those online opportunities as possible. Because I agree with you. I mean, obviously, there's going to come a time when we can't offer everything, but a student might want to take calculus or might want to take something that's not there. So we continually look for opportunities to do that.
Yeah, Hope, I think that's...
I mean, I think, oh, sorry, Dr. Cash. I mean, it's like, I don't, I think that's fine. But I don't think that's, I guess, it's almost as if we're not prioritizing it as an initiative that we should be moving in that direction. And how do we summon all of our resources? How do we utilize the teachers that we have? Because, you know, not every teacher is certified to teach these AP courses. So they're scattered throughout the district. So, I mean, they're not in every school. Or they don't, they don't have the ability to teach, you know, the courses in every school. But we do have virtual learning. Every single kid that wants to take a course should have that option. That's just my thought, but, you know.
I was going to respond to that. I just said that that's one answer, Anne, and thank you for that. But my response was going to be simply, absolutely, that's what we, I mentioned that last year, that I'd like to look into having a virtual school, pre-K to 12, for students. I said that last year. But when I started to see how this is unfolding this year and how many challenges we're seeing with how long students have been out and away, this issue that we had back in March, we just can't do everything this year. We can't do it all this year. We need to focus on getting these students back, looking them in the eye every day, seeing what their needs are. And then when we, when we can, we'll begin to go in that direction. I said that.
Dr. Cash, I appreciate that.
See, that is an immediate priority for us to try to accomplish this year, at the beginning of this year. I have to, that's all of what our capacity is at this time. But that's definitely something that's in the future.
I just, I don't think it's mutually exclusive, though. I think we're talking about two different things.
Oh, maybe I misunderstood.
I don't think it's mutually exclusive. I think that, you know, when you have kids that are in advanced placement courses or who want to take advanced placement courses, those are motivated kids. Those are kids who are going to get online and do the work. So, I mean, that's not every kid, right? But the kids who are in advanced placement and IB courses, and, you know, those are kids who are going to sign on. And if they don't, then they're not going to be in those courses. So I just, you know, I understand that we have a whole, you know, all these challenges with the population, our student body at large. But I'm, we're focused, we're talking about AP and IB. So, you know, I think we're talking about a group of kids that are already intrinsically motivated, right? Or they wouldn't be taking those courses.
Well, we've got to still get devices to them. And I didn't want to just prioritize AP and UB courses in the first part of the year. I wanted to make sure all kids start to get...
No, I understand that. And I'm not saying that they should be prioritized. What I'm saying is that we should be thinking about an initiative to make those courses available for everyone across the board.
I agree with that. And we can move to that. We can move to that just as quickly as staff say that they can and that it's all ready to go. That's what we can do. But it won't be next week, and it won't be the week after that.
Two weeks?
I appreciate your comment. I appreciate it.
And those, that is one of the questions you also can add to that survey. And as you talked about, student voice, you know, have them answer that question as well. But thank you for those conversations. I'm going to move to City Hall. Dr. Anne Rivera, you're up.
Thank you very much. I also have two questions, one for AP and one for the transition curriculum. So for AP, I've always been not quite clear about how students are identified and offered the option to take AP courses. And I think several other parents out there probably feel the same way. Can you quickly run through how students are identified and access those courses for us?
So it's open enrollment. We encourage any student that is motivated and wants to take the course to take the course. Obviously, depending on what is available to that student, depending on their other scheduled courses. With EOS, we actually target students that we might have typically overlooked. So their mission is to identify underserved students and to help recruit them for the programs. So one of the goals is that teachers are talking to students about AP. Because what we found after the first year's surveys was that there were, it wasn't an option. They didn't recognize that they could take an AP. They might have known that it existed, but they didn't know anybody in the class or they didn't have information. So one of the goals working with EOS is to identify those students, make sure they have information, and talk to them. You know, you said on a survey that you really like math. Have you thought about statistics? Or you identified to us that you really like English, but next year, it doesn't look like you've, you know, you've talked to anyone yet about AP English. So let's take a look at that. There's AP literature, AP language. What is more in line with what you enjoy? Some schools are putting many, many of their students right into AP language for junior year because it so tightly aligns to the Regents course. But we are starting to have more and more conversations. And schools work with EOS to strategize for the upcoming school year. So this year, they're planning for next year. So they're well in advance of the following year to talk about which courses to offer, how to get kids interested, you know, what we can do to increase enrollment.
Great, thank you. And are students mandated to, are students, how are students encouraged to take those AP exams? They don't actually have to, but are they, is that a part of the whole programming?
Yeah, the teachers spend a lot of time talking about the AP exam. Because they definitely want their students to take those, yes. And the district, to encourage students to take the exams, the district has taken on the cost of the AP exam for any student in the district in any course. So if you're taking four APs, we will pay for all four admission costs. So we are taking that on to help encourage them.
That's excellent. That is really, really good to hear. So my whole thrust of conversation here is about post-secondary. So I'd like to turn to my question about the transition curriculum. This is something, as you know, very close to my heart as I worked as one of your college partners on this curriculum. How is adoption of going? I noticed that the numbers have gone up. And are students enrolling in it? And so this is a triple-barrel question. How is the rollout going? Are you planning to expand the rollout? And how are you tracking whether or not that influences students' outcomes?
Okay, a lot of questions. Okay, so last year was a pilot year. And we offered it at two schools, I believe. This year, we're up to 14 schools. So to encourage the enrollment, we put it into ARP. So we're funding a point two for any school that needs it to get kids into those courses. Because some of that came after school-based budgeting and staffing was already established, we were able to work with 14 schools to make it happen this year. But by next year, because they'll know far in advance, everyone should be able to offer the course. So right now, most of them are doing two sections, one first semester, one second semester. And if you'll bear with me for a second, I actually have a copy of the book that they're using. We went with one that Middle, Early College had selected previously. When they work with their, to acclimate, yep, the master student. Can you see that? I'm sorry. So this is a consumable book. So every student receives a copy. It's very structured. They're going to talk about what a syllabus is. So how do you analyze a college syllabus? How do you know what you're looking for in coursework? How do you stay mentally healthy? Like, you're going to be stressed. This is going to be a stressful situation for you. So what are some exercises you can do to acclimate? They talk about budgeting. They talk about all sorts of things that we might not have traditionally discussed in a class. But obviously, the first part is just getting them into college. So what is a FAFSA, right? How do you apply for a scholarship? What does that mean? So so far, I mean, it's only been a month into school, but I am hearing good things from teachers so far. And hopefully, the students are appreciating it as well. So in terms of tracking, we'll be looking at the enrollment. And then ideally, we'd like to see how many kids matriculate into the colleges that are offering Part II and be able to track their progress that way.
Great, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. So standing in the City Hall, Board Member Scott.
Thank you, Dr. Evans Brown. Ms. Botticelli, that was a great presentation. The opportunities that were displayed there are just wonderful for our students. And you showed a student with a violin and mentioned the instruments, the instrumental music opportunities that have increased this year. I'm hearing occasionally, you know, how are we spending our ARP funds? The additional funds that have come into the district. Dr. Grasses and Ms. Jamie Cohen put a list of all the community input that we received. And we're trying to respond to those, that input that we received. And I'm just wondering, at some point, if there could be, and it's not anything that needs to happen in the near future, there could be an update on how we've increased staff, where we've increased staff, what resources we've increased, and, you know, how that ties into the additional funding that we've received.
Absolutely. But remember, it's a three-year plan. So it'll be incremental increases in staffing. They weren't necessarily all hired in the first year. So for example, we're hiring eight additional social workers. I don't want to give you misinformation. I know many of them have been hired, but due to other staffing opportunities in the district, they haven't all been hired yet. But by the, in the next month or so, we hope to have all eight positions filled. All of the elementary instrumental positions have been filled. All of the elementary instrumental positions have been filled. We have some built-in staffing, for example, at the high school level. So, as we add the music technology courses, we're adding staffing. As we add some of the new math courses at the high school level, we, we've included staffing. As we add more algebra opportunities at eighth grade, we've included staffing. So, some of that will be incremental over the next three years.
Great, that's awesome.
To Mr. Scott's question directly, colleagues, I think as soon as the November Finance and Ops meeting, you could, you could get a, a full detailed layout of, of all of that. And we'd be happy to do it at that time.
That, that would be great. I was going to suggest mid-year, but November would be great. The new, the online course catalog that you've shared, Ms. Bala Charlie, is that live now?
No, no, it's live for me at the moment. We're just fine tuning a few things. Like, I told you that I missed the Buffalo, History of Buffalo course. So, as I was showing it to you, and, and Ms. Makozi was pointing that out. So, we're just fine tuning. Hopefully, it'll be live next week. We'll send you a link. That's the goal. We'll send you a link as soon as it's available.
Okay. And then my last point, I've raised this before, I, I said it last year when we were talking about the New York State assessments, that our schools, our staff are always assessing our students. And you went over those, the nibbles and the I-Daddy testing. I'm seeing it with my own kids. They're going through it. The, the thing that I think we need to do better, and I've, I've mentioned this before, is when we get, when those results, the staff get those results, that we have a standardized way of communicating those results to parents. Typically, the only way, as parents, my wife and I get them, is if we request them. There's just not a, a regular communication of those results. And I think that's something that we need to standardize across the district. And then along with that, I brought this up before, and I know this, some of this is contractual, but we still need to have parent conferences, scheduled parent conferences with teachers. The open house model that we use is just not sufficient to have that communication directly, teacher to parent, private confidential communication. And I know some, some schools do find a way to have more of the structured parent conferences, but it's something that I think we need to, as we move forward and with cap contract potentially negotiations occurring, that we need to talk about how we can have periodic parent conferences that are part of the, the regular school year every year.
Okay, thank you.
That was all for me.
I'm trying to work for myself, so I'll make sure that we address that.
All right, Board President Lou.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins-Brown. A few, just a few different comments as we move forward. So, first of all, I just want to say kudos for the expansion of teaching of Seneca and other native languages. You know, it's a small step that the district can do to reconduct or reconnect our indigenous students with their culture and their past. So, you know, kudos to you. That's, I know it's something I've asked about repeatedly, and I'm really happy to see it starting to come to fruition and to expand. Hope spoke a lot about the AP courses. So, I don't want to, but, but in terms of the, the course catalog, I really, I was so happy to see, like, things I know Terrence had talked about, like the NAACP clearinghouse, students are taking a good credit. I know what I saw, but the college transition course, I can't think of something that is going to, that would, that's going to do a better job of leveling the, the playing field for so many of our, so many of our students. Just they didn't have the resources. You know, they relied on friends or family or somebody else. And if you didn't have that, that type of support group, you were at a disadvantage. And I really think that's going to go a long way. I think it's also going to address many of the concerns that we've heard from our secondary institutions of learning about how prepared kids are when they, when they walk through the front door. This goes a long way to address that, so kudos. I also think this is going to tie into academic achievement. Because when you see these courses are much more reflective of the desires of students and their families, and there are things that kids want to take, in my humble opinion, and when you're interested and you're engaged, hopefully, we will achieve better outcomes. So, I really think that's going to tie into higher achievement for the district, higher academic achievement. And last, I know we can't do it in the next two or three weeks, but I, I really like the idea of the virtual academies. I, I think that for a certain segment of our student population, there's some value there. And I like to hear that the district can do this point further. I really think that brings some value. Because there is a certain segment of our kids that would benefit from that. I don't think it's good for everybody, but for certain segments, absolutely. So, thank you. Thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Yeah, let me respond, Lou, very quickly to that. Anne did a terrific job. Lou, I may have misunderstood Hope's question, so I just want to be clear here. If we're talking about a full-blown online academy like we have in Miami, which I'm very familiar with, we're not there yet. It would take, it would take some time to build to there.
Absolutely.
But if we're talking about just having AP or IB students who are highly motivated and they will motivate it, and they want to take a course, one of their courses toward the 21 credits they need to graduate online because they worked on such and such a day or Saturday, or, you know, they don't have the time after school, but they could catch it up and get it done if it were offered online. With my team, but I do think that's more likely to be possible sooner than a full-blown online. So, so, so I didn't, I maybe didn't understand, but if Hope, you'd like to, to clarify what you meant between what I just described, then I'm happy to be able to try to give you a more definitive answer.
It would be the latter, Dr. Cash. Not, not, yeah.
Okay, so I, that, that was my mistake for not understanding it. I was thinking of the full-blown, because in my head, I know the Miami model very well, and I know how long it took to bring that into fruition and then keep it at a, at a, almost a best-in-class level there. But I, I have that vision for us here. I just knew that this year, because of the disruptions and the COVID-associated challenges to offer many of our operations, I didn't think it was feasible for us to build that, you know, right away. But this, this notion of, yeah, you can take a course, take it, try to, maybe a couple of courses. I'm going to meet with the team, and let's see what we can do to get that done. If not this semester, perhaps launched, be able to launch that in the next semester.
Yeah, I, I love that idea also, Hope. I think that concludes all the questions. Parents Heard, Board Member Heard, you had a question. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I received a couple of calls from parents who are, children were suspended, you know, because of violent act, got caught, you know, got caught up in some type of dispute with another, with another students or other students. And I'd like to know, how can we move forward with the, a virtual counseling, like, or a whole child-type counseling program so that we can, you know, interact with these children and also still give them education while they're at home? I've been a big proponent of that, and when children are suspended, that we should, you know, with our technology, how advanced we became the last couple of years because of COVID, that we can reach out to those families and those children, and also not only get education, but counseling to those children. So, there'll be ease when they come back into the classroom.
So, colleagues, as my understanding is that during the remote learning year last year, which we spent most of our year in that environment, almost all of our services, all of our social, emotional learning services, our special education services, our counseling services, I believe were provided virtually. So, Tanja, if you're there, I think you're the best person to respond directly to Board Member Heard's questions. So, do we not have that capacity to, to work with students virtually when they are suspended, when they are on short or long-term absences from school, for whatever reason, illness, COVID quarantine, so forth and so on? But how would you respond? I think it's a good question, but I think you're the most expert on that.
It's an excellent question. And we did offer telecounseling last year when most of our students were out. All of our schools have mental health providers that are provided through our partnership with Say Yes, and they all do offer telecounseling. We, it's very timely, though, that you share this because we're looking at, for this year, targeting a more specific and intense type of counseling for students that have been suspended from school. And so, yes, we do offer the mental health counseling piece, but we do look to expand that to offering counseling on things like anger management and, you know, decision-making and all of those things that are really targeted specifically for our students who are suspended from school.
Is that available now? I believe that every child that, that gets suspended because of a incident or issue should receive some type of counseling. Somebody should contact them, and they should maybe speak with someone about what the ordeal was, or, or maybe a sort of justice measures, and, you know, try to have, you know, some things rectified before entering back into the building so that they won't, you know, join into the same type of conflict or the same attitude. So, I just think that every child that's out of the classroom right now should have this available to them right now.
It's available to them. And when students receive long-term suspensions, which are for more serious infractions, there's really two pieces to their long-term suspension hearing. The first is meeting with the hearing officer and identifying, did they actually do what is alleged that they did? The second part of that, though, is when the tape recording is turned off, it's an opportunity for our hearing officers, all of whom are trained school counselors and/or social workers, to have a conversation with the parent and with the student about, you know, peeling the layers to see what happened and offering them some referrals to get some support so that, you know, they're able to make better decisions when they get back to school. So, that happens.
I, I, I thank you for your answer, but I'm really not, you know, hearing what I've, you know, hearing the answer that I'm, I'm trying to receive is that can we make it mandatory to make sure that the children that get suspended?
We can make it mandatory.
On the total conduct, but it should be.
We can make it mandatory, but we do strongly encourage, and I will share that most of our parents are interested in their children doing better, not getting suspended, behaving better. And so, most do support them getting counseling, but we can't make it mandatory.
You could recommend it as part of their healing manual.
We strongly recommend it.
Okay, but I would still believe they should receive some type of contact from the district, you know, concerning, concerning that outside the, the school building. That can be done.
So, it happens, it does happen during that hearing. Sometimes it's not counseling. Sometimes it's mentoring, you know, that's recommended. So, our hearing officers have lists of supports that they're able to offer to families. It's really not a one-size-fits-all where every child, you know, has to have the counseling. For some, it's one bad decision that they've made, and they really need something like a big brother or a mentor to help them, you know, make better decisions. So, you know, the hearing officers do peel those kinds of layers and talk with the parents about what they need, you know, how long have issues been going on? Is it just for this child, or are there some things happening, you know, with the family? Do they need family counseling? Does the child just need counseling? It just depends. But the in-school mental health piece is offered, whether it's telecounseling or in-person counseling. Right now, we're able to offer in-person and telecounseling.
I, I plan on bringing this forward in, up the next couple of months with the Educated Support Committee meeting. But my problem is, is that we have children, I reported children that was out of school for three, three weeks or may, even maybe over a month before they received that hearing. So, I just want to try to speed up the process and maybe get some contact with that student before that much time passes.
That should not happen because they're mandated to hold the hearing within a certain amount of time. So, if you have a case like that, I'd like to know who it is. The only time that we will extend it is if a family requests a postponement, which sometimes they do, you know, things happen and they request a postponement. But we are always prepared to do the hearing within, you know, the mandated timeframe.
Okay, we talked about that later, mandated timeframes and how to move forward, but I don't want to hold anything up. But I just wanted to get that question about the counseling to the kids that were suspended and not receiving any contact from the district.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I don't see any other plans, Ray. So, we can move on, Dr. Cash, to the final presentation on attendance.
Good evening, everyone.
Hold on, Ms. Bullet.
Yep.
So, colleagues, this, this again is a sampling of some of the challenges, and it'd make for some, a robust discussion afterwards. But I wanted the board to, sooner than later, get a sense of what the state definition of attendance is. We often talk about attendance, but there's a very specific formula for calculating average daily attendance. And all board members should, should commit to memory what that formula is because it's tied to state funding. However, that formula only works when we're kind of in normal times. It actually becomes a bit punitive when we're not in normal times. And so, what you'll see in a brief way, brief, three or four slides, I believe, we put together here, what some of the challenges are early on with having students come to school every day, five days a week, you know, and, and what, and what we've seen. So, Ms. Butter, Ms. Bullet, if you would proceed with your slides and use your expertise to annotate some of this information that you know so well. So, thank you.
Okay. Amir, you could actually go to the slide, the second, slide number 12 in the deck with the children. Dr. Cash sort of briefly talked about why ADA is, is important. It's, of course, because it, so, yep, go past that. It's connected to our funding. So, this is the formula, colleagues. It is basically the way we calculate ADA is we take each of the students, right? So, it's the number of students that attend school each day that the school is open divided by the number of students that was supposed to be in school each day, and then you multiply that by 100. And that will give us our ADA. And so, as of October 4th, our ADA is 82.58%. And so, I know that, you know, we would shoot for a goal of somewhere in the neighborhood of 85 to 90% as a, as a, as a, as a great ADA rate. But this is where we are this week, but we're encouraged. Amir, if you can go to the next slide. We're encouraged because our students are getting here. They're working on it. We're working hard with parents to get them here. But this is what it looks like right now. So, our ADA is 82.58% is where we are right now. But what you can see is the students that are most dependent on school, they're not far behind. And we're doing lots of things to make sure that we're doing targeted interventions, targeted outreach to our students who most need to be in school. So, I gave you on this screen ADA first by grade level. I'm really encouraged by that pre-K number. We struggle every year to get pre-Kers in, and sometimes at different points of the year, we see a little bit of lag, but that 84.5, I'd round that up to 85%. That's encouraging. We know these kids have to be in school. They're our earliest learners. If we get them quick and get them early, we can get them on track to success quicker and get them on the road to successful completion of high school. So, I'm encouraged by that 85% that our kids, our pre-Kers are showing up. And then you can see, we are doing fairly well, grades one through eight. Our, our elementary kids are getting here despite.
Our, our elementary kids are getting here despite some of the barriers, and I'm going to talk about that. So while it's not in the, by and large collectively, it's, we're, we're getting near to that 85%, the numbers are encouraging, and I'm, and I'm going to tell you why. One of the things we wanted to note is, even when you look at some of our highest achieving subgroups, they're hovering around that 85%. So what are we doing and what's impacting our ADA? So Amir, if you go to the next slide. Just want to talk about, talk to you about a few barriers. So we know that some of our parents are still just a little hesitant. You know, COVID has not gone away completely, and so we are hearing from our parents that, you know, they're not quite sure about sending their kids into our building, and they know that our principals and our central office administrators are doing the best we can to keep our kids safe. We're social distancing kids, but there's still, it's some hesitancy. We know that another barrier or another thing that's impacting our ADA is COVID quarantines. And so folks, though, again, our community is doing the best they can to keep themselves safe. We now have breakthrough cases, people are getting sick and having to be quarantined. So, you know, quarantine, COVID quarantines are going to impact our ADA for the next foreseeable future until we can get a cap on that. And this, your every other, you know, your everyday regular illnesses, when kids are sick and they're not able to get to school for whatever reasons. We discussed today in cabinet, RSV is, is kind of shooting up. All, you know, all these other respiratory illnesses are impacting and kids are staying home. And of course, we encourage, if you don't feel well, don't come to school. And while we say that, we have to understand that's great to protect our community, but it's going to impact our ADA. While we have very few immunization exclusions, when kids and families don't understand the importance of getting those immunizations in, it could impact our ADA. I want you to know that this year, we didn't get a extension from the state. So any child who's not up to date in their immunizations, unfortunately, we have to exclude them. That's going to impact our ADA. And then, you know, Cheryl is one of our unsung heroes in our district this year, but transportation is a hiccup. I, I didn't want to put it on the slide, but our parents, some of our parents are saying they don't have, you know, reliable transportation. It's, it's causing a slight barrier to get kids to school, and we're doing so much to make sure that we can provide support for parents who need that. So those are the barriers, those four are the big four barriers right now to a healthy ADA, an ADA where we all want it to be, you know, 85 moving up towards 90%. So I want you to know that while we are climbing and the numbers are encouraging, today was Bed's Day. You have to remember, in every school district, Bed's Day is a very important day. That's when we lock in our enrollment numbers, and that's when we can really start finding where these kids are, who came back to our school, and so that's an important day. So that's an important intervention right then and there for all school districts is to clean up that enrollment. And then we know our principals, our teachers, our SST teams, Tanges, Dr. Williams team, excuse me, they're all over providing family-centered, student-centered, language-supported, language- mediated, culturally-supported interventions for our families. So we're calling families. You have attendance teachers and social workers going out to families and saying, what can we do? What do you need so that we can get you there? We know that principals have taken the unprecedented act of adjusting their school schedules so that they might provide maybe a 30-minute window before school starts for parents to drop off if they don't have a bus yet or if there's some other issue that's impacting getting their kids to school. Some schools are providing like a 30, 25 to 30-minute buffer where parents can drop them off at the school where there's trusted individuals who can make sure that kids are safe but in school and starting school on time. The SST teams, instead of calling, they're doing robocalls, they're meeting with parents. We know that Student Support, that division, have arranged vaccine clinics. We have our mobile vaccine bus that's going around. We've done vaccine clinics at schools, on Saturday academies. We have an upcoming varsity football game where we're going to have our mobile vaccine clinic outside, and as folks are coming in to see our athletes play a football game, they can decide to get, you know, a vaccine to make sure that their family is safe and to make sure that kids are able to come in school. We know that there's been a combined effort with building principals, the Division of Student Supports, my office's Office of Shared Accountability, where we're literally monitoring ADA every single day. And we're providing, it says here, supports to students and families, but we're also providing support to teachers and schools to make sure that they understand why taking accurate home room attendance is so important to our ADA. We're in the process of doing beds cleanup. Beds, for most of you, you know, beds no longer is just that first Wednesday in October. Beds last throughout October, so we're going to continue to clean up our roles and make sure we know who's here. And then, most importantly, we have such robust initiatives to hire more bus drivers. So while the barriers are just a few handful, we have such great interventions that we're really working to make sure that our students are getting to school on time every single day. And as we continue to do that, you will see that our ADA is going to continually arise as we are working our plans. And so I think that there is much for us to celebrate and much for us to be encouraged, to feel encouraged regarding what we're doing. And it really is all centered around what kids and family need to get them to school every day on time.
Thank you, Ebony. Dr. Kathy Evans.
Yes, thank you, Ebony Bullock. That was very detailed because as we know, research shows that regular attendance increases graduation rates or vice versa. Kids don't come to school, they're going to drop out. So it's important that we have some inroads in place, interventions in place to get these little darlings back in school. So I don't see any hands. Mr. Hurd, is that your hand or is that from the last time?
Put it down.
Okay. All right, so I'm, oh, wait a minute. I don't want, I'm getting ready to leave the meeting. I'm going to start with the panel that I can see. President, I mean, board member Sharon Felton-Cotman. You have any questions or comments for Mrs. Bullock?
Thank you, Mrs. Bullock, for your presentation. Question, why is it that some schools can adjust their schedules and all schools can't? I guess what I'm trying to say, particularly since we have this transportation crises, how is it that, you know, certain schools are allowed? Why isn't it universal? Why are our schools required to adjust their schedules to see if they can accommodate parents being able to drop their children off before they go to work? I'm just curious about that question. I heard you say some schools have adjusted.
Yeah, Ebony, I'm not sure that's yours. Let's try, Nate, do you know, can you speak to this at all?
Yeah, we, 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 all schools were permitted that flexibility to have school, depending on whether they're an early or late school. All schools were permitted that flexibility, and every school throughout the district had their teacher aides' hours changed from seven, seven hours to eight hours so that they could adjust or have staff there to accept students early in the case of early schools or have students stay later in the case of late schools. And so the staffing, you know, has been adjusted throughout the district for all schools to have the ability to do that.
So it is across the board.
And even the high schools where the yellow bus, you know, issues are less prevalent. So every teacher aide and assistance hours were adjusted to allow for that additional staffing, to allow for students to be there earlier or later.
Okay, thank you. So the data that you presented was not segregated by schools. Particularly, my concern is the high school numbers because typically, we struggle with those numbers in a good year. And so I know there are some schools that are boosting up those numbers. What is being done? You said that there's school and district outreach. I understand that no attendance teachers were added on. So we have additional money from the federal government to help us realizing that this was going to be a crisis. How was that money used? There was any of that money used to help with this situation? And what does school and district outreach look like at this point?
Yeah, I'd like, hold on, Todd, Dr. Williams. I'd like Dr. Williams and Toya to address that because Toya is our lead for secondary schools, and both, and both of you together, if you would respond, please.
Sure. We did add attendance teachers in the funding that has been provided. So we do have additional attendance teachers, so that takes down the caseload and school assignments that we had for attendance teachers last year. So we do have that in a part, as a part of their outreach. They do a whole host of things from calling families to going out to homes to being at family court if they need to go to family court. So they do a lot of, you know, outreach. That's really their expertise to do that, and Ebony's team has been training them on understanding. In addition to the outreach piece, there's a really important piece as far as, you know, ensuring that the attendance is being taken the right way for different circumstances. So, you know, I happened to be at one of the meetings and they were asking questions about some students may leave the country, you know, for a certain period of time every year. And, you know, are we binging those students or how that's handled? And so Ebony and her team were able to help, you know, help them through some of that. But the attendance teachers are really, they're an invaluable resource, and we did add some attendance teachers in our funding.
Okay, so how many attendance teachers do we have district-wide? Because is their workload manageable?
I mean, when you say manageable, I believe that it is. I do believe that it is. I believe our principals value the work that attendance teachers do so they help them to target the work. You know, you won't find attendance teachers necessarily doing things like cafeteria duty or anything like that. They are really targeted at trying to, you know, address those students that are severely and chronically absent. They participate in the SST teams. So I will get a number of exactly, I don't want to quote. I believe we may have 20 attendance teachers, but I don't want to misquote, so I will get the exact number.
Okay, so we, we have, we have how many schools? About 50, what, 57?
We have 60.
60 schools at this point and almost 20 attendance teachers. Okay.
To get back on some of the things that Dr. Williams has already said, as well as Ms. Bullock. At the high school, the relationship-building piece has been critical. One thing that has been expanded in this last year is the number of schools that offer an advisory program. So they have the home room connection, but they also have expanded advisory programs. And that's an opportunity for students to be in smaller groups, to really build connections with one person in the school. Those relationships impact attendance. They really are tied heavily to attendance, and those people are heavily tied to supporting any student who might have issues with attendance, like communication with family. They work, they could be working along with those attendance teachers. The home visits that happen, they go beyond the attendance teachers. So we have that happening with attendance teachers. Staff members who are partaking in that work. We have folks from the SST going out as well as administrators who make those connections. The high school principals also have communication plans in which they have expectations set for, you know, if a student is missing a couple of days, there's a way that they are reaching out to administration to make sure that there's a connection that is made, and they're sharing those connections that they've made, and that is documented in our information system. Vaccination clinics and things like that that we already mentioned, those things help people feel better about being able to come to school. As you know, our high school, they're all aged to be vaccinated, so we continue to offer those opportunities. And just working with families around obstacles around transportation. I know it was mentioned before, you know, that transportation was an obstacle, but there's been plans set up for people who may have, because of the transportation obstacle, be missing the first period. So there's been plans set up by school, you know, individually with families to support whatever is needed as we work through these bumps with transportation, which we anticipate improving and is already, you know, has, we've already seen some growth. So those are some of the things that are happening at the high school level. As we transition back from this period of COVID, the thing that is notable, that we need, we need to make sure that we pay attention to is that the high school has ninth and 12, four grade levels. Two of those grade levels have not really been in high school the way high school was run, we remember it, the way it was prior to COVID. That's ninth and 10th grade. So we're working with them to feel comfortable about being in those schools because, you know, this is a whole new ballgame to shift to high school. And so you have half of a school community across the board in all of our high schools, at which that's the thing that the principals are working against and working to improve.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board member Cotman, I do have a number for you. We have 21 attendance teachers. We also have an attendance coordinator and a supervisor over the department. And I can tell you that over the last few years, as we've added on attendance teachers, you know, we really look at the skill set. We're very honest, it's a hard job, it's not an easy job. We have a very diverse team of attendance teachers. We want folks, you know, that really support the children. They're not afraid to go into the community. They're not nervous about, you know, having challenging conversations with parents. They know where the resources are in the community. And so I'm very happy with the group, you know, of attendance teachers that we have, that we've been working with, and I think we will continue to see good outcomes from them.
So what does that equal to a principal as far as how long they would have an attendance teacher? Do they get them once a day? I mean, once a week? Or do they get them? How does that work? Because if you've got 21 for 60 schools, that's just, I'm, what is that?
You're doing the math. So it's not that clear cut because we do use an equity model. We look at what schools need. You know, we don't look at the equal, everybody gets, you know, a flat rate. We look at what they really need, what their attendance data, their trend data over the last few years has shown. And so that's how attendance teachers are assigned.
Okay, because I'm, I, I know that my high schools are not getting an attendance teacher, but maybe a half a day, a week or something like that. And that, that concerns me because if these children, in order to graduate or to get them to where they need to do, they're just not used to coming to school. And I, I'm just concerned that, that we had the money, we have the money, and that at this, that, that in intense effort, it, it, we need an additional intense effort for these attendance teachers to, or to get these people, these kids back on, on track. Because in addition to that, my understanding is, is that the SST team has to pick up the slack for the, when the attendance teachers aren't there. They're making the calls and things like that. And as a result of the behavior issues that are going on in our school, particularly our high schools, they're saying that they're overstressed. Today, on our meeting today, the teachers were really saying that, you know, they've been really stressed and with the expectations that have been put on them. And, and so I'm just concerned that we're missing an opportunity to provide additional resources to our high schools at this point. That's all.
I would, I would, I would suggest, Ms. Cotman, that I agree that the high schools, the data right here show that the high schools need more attention. And, and just like we do with attendance teachers, at this time in the, in the year, you could, you could deploy Chandra to the high schools, maybe at a, or the school, high schools and the schools that are pre-Ked. pre-k to eight, that have the greatest need. And then I think 21 could at least at this point be a great start. I mean, some schools might need two. For example, we send security guards out, some schools have three and more, others have no need for them. And so I do think we should do that. We also have the Say Yes partnership that's, we have allowed that, those people into the schools, and they have family support specialists. And family support specialists deal with the more chronic and severe cases of attendance. And so there's some additional layers of support for students. So we can make a presentation at the next Student Support Services, or anyone would like, put it up on the big board and see where these people are deployed. If everything becomes a one-to-one correspondence, we're going to be unable to sustain that, particularly throughout the RFS or funding, and then when it drops in three or five, four years, you will be at 500, 600, 700 FTE. So I think the idea, the point is well made. What we want is really good, top-notch attendance teachers. And so Tanga's work, Dr. Williams' work, is focused on making sure that these people are excellently trained and ready, ready to do strategically-focused work. But we take, we take the considerations in as we go along and as the data presents itself, we'll be able to make adjustments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Dr. Cass, I don't know if you know this or anybody told you, but your connection is pausing quite frequently throughout the night. Anybody else notice it?
What's that?
Your connection is pausing, you know, I don't know what it is, but you may be talking and all of a sudden you just pause. But nevertheless, somebody needs to take care of that. We can't have that for our superintendent. Thank you for that, Dr. Williams. Let's see, Jim, Board Member Jim McCoskey, followed by Board Member Hope Day. Questions or comments?
Thank you, Board Member Brown. So I had to leave the call for just a moment, and when I came back, I'd like to refer to a question that Board Member Cotman had earlier. Nate, I appreciate how you had said that, you know, schools are all aware of early times that folks can, parents can drop off, and then later times. Am I, did I miss how this has been communicated to the public? I myself really, you know, I feel like I could use that information, and sometimes I drop off my granddaughters and my son as well. So is that, what did, I apologize, but what did I miss? We do have this option, and we hired teacher aides and assistants to be at the schools early and later. Am I correct in that? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, that's correct. We've expanded the day, knowing that we were going to have, you know, that's one of the strategies we utilize to reduce the number of routes that we've had, is dropping kids off earlier at early schools and departing later from late schools. So we expanded the day for our aides and assistants. Now, I mean, I would turn to the associates as to how that may have been communicated from each, you know, each school-specific site, because it's going to, you know, it's going to go school by school by school, you know, and how that's been communicated. You know, I don't have the information to share with you right now, but I certainly could look to that or turn to my colleagues to share with you.
Yeah, just, you know, just clarity around, this is parents dropping students off early, or the buses dropping them off early, right? Parents dropping students off early and picking kids up?
It was primarily done for the buses.
Okay.
You know, okay, so the buses.
That's what I needed.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And you know what? I have another question, because this was brought to me in two different arenas. The, just real quick, and you can give it to me offline, too. But when we start the after-school, is that what you were talking about? Does that, we were talking about maybe floating after-school until 6 o'clock? Is that a thing? The early schools, instead of 5 o'clock, they'll be getting out at 6:00? The after-school will be extended till 6:00? And then later schools until later, like 7:00? And these are things that I'm hearing, I'm not sure. And knowing that this is public, I'd like to be able to clarify that for folks, because it was both in school and then, and out in the public as well.
And what are you, what are you and Tara planning in that regard?
Mrs. McCosy?
Right. We're definitely trying to work with transportation to get more information about what it will look like, but there's no definite answer. I'm not sure where someone had heard that from. I can't, I wish I could say exactly what it'll look like, but until we have a better handle on the busing.
I'm glad you said that, because it needs to be, instead of coming for me, for the public knows that, you know, this is still in the works. And there is no definite, you know, timeframe or any of that. And it just came to me as if it was a matter of fact, and I appreciate that it isn't just yet, and we're still working on it. So I'll definitely put that out there. Thank you.
Okay. Board Member Hope Day?
I don't have, yeah, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Board Member Brown?
Yes, a couple of quick questions. I'll make it quick. What is a child red flag when they don't come to school, when they have like poor attendance? How many days do they miss or late, how many days? Or what's the, what's the calculus of when a child's identified a red flag as a tennis issue?
I'm pulling the exact numbers up right now, if you just give me a quick second. I know that they get flagged for chronic if they've missed more than 30 days.
Look it up, Ms. Bullock, look it up. And I'll just give what I know. You have satisfactory, you have risk, at-risk, and then you have chronic, and then severe. And satisfactory is zero to five days. I believe at-risk becomes six to 10 days, 15 for chronic, and then above 15 for severe, 15 to 25 days. And so we track that on a monthly basis for students. That's just, that's roughly off the top of my head. And those are the four main categories, and we have to report that to the state.
That's a very satisfactory answer. My next question was responsibility of a tennis teacher. Are they actually, like, before going to the home, if there's a, if they reach the chronic stage or severe stage? Do they actually not go to the door at the phone call?
Yes, they do.
Just want to make sure that was clear. So my last questions were about being proactive. Since we have cut a numerous amount of bus routes, and with it gets inclined like on snow days, and parents may anticipate that schools may not be, may close, or if it's snowing heavily that morning, how are we addressing that? Are we looking in advance to possibly close schools or announce in advance that school will be closed? Or are we just planted by ear sometimes? I'm not quite sure how that process works about closing schools, although we looked at the weather report. But if it's 6 o'clock in the morning or 6:30 in the morning, and a child's standing outside and the weather's pretty bad, and, you know, buses, you know, run a little later because of inclement weather, what are we expecting from our parents and our students in a situation like that?
Yeah, that's one of our greatest concerns. I hope you don't, I hope I don't freeze, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. But our greatest concern is students in freezing and frigid weather and poorly clothed. So every year, when it gets cold here, and with all the lake effect issues that we have here in Buffalo, I start looking at it at zero degrees for our, for our, for our students. Wind chill starts to get to 15, minus 15 degrees, that's, that's a definite closure. I try to make the decision in consultation with Jim Wymer over the last couple of years by 4:00 in the morning. And if we can get on the same page with all of the Western New York, but specifically Erie County schools, we try to make the call together. They often look at Buffalo Public Schools to see what they're going to do, and then everybody makes the call. So I try to make it by 6:00 PM the day before, the day before, so that parents can have a chance to make arrangements, make adjustments in any way that they need to. But certainly no later than 4:00 AM, so that buses can get out, see if they can even start, what the roads look like. Somebody does a test of all of that, beginning at 2:00 AM, and they breathe, they basically drive the main streets in each community and some of the back roads to see if they have been cleared. I take all of that information into consideration, and then I make, make the call. Sometimes the toughest call, Mr. Hur to make in a school year. But we always prioritize children first, and I really want to commend, there's so many people in the community who donate winter coats and winter clothing, hats and gloves to our students. And that effort must continue this year, particularly because so many have lost income during these two years. So we'll have drives to do, you know, clothing drives to get, take those donations. But bottom line is, that's the process essentially. We have a massive phone tree, it's very structured. We can send you a copy of our, of our phone tree and how that works, and then I make the call, and then all that phone tree goes into, into operation effect, including notifying all the media, so that they can put it out across their ticker tape.
Okay. My last thing is another question, as a statement. Thank you for that, Dr. Cass, because you quite explained the process very well, not sure, you know, that to get around, you know, so parents will understand the process of how schools are decided, whether, you know, it's safe to open or to close for that day. My last thing is, with attendance, when a child has a tennis problem, I believe in giving like positive sanctions, you know, when they turn it around or try to, try to come to school or just make a change, you know, it might be a family issue, a crisis or something that's going on. But are we looking at any like positive sanctions for these children, you know, that we reach out to and possibly get them to return to school? To keep them motivated to come to school?
What, did you say sanctions or incentives? What, I'm sorry.
It's the same thing.
No.
Negative sanctions, yeah, negative sanctions and positive sanctions.
But I'm a big fan of incentives, so I, and I'm at a multi-tiered level of incentives. And I think in this time, colleagues, it's a great idea to incentivize attendance. We kind of started that, that kind of concept with this Earn While You Learn program this summer. You know, historically, we never done that. If you needed to go to summer school, then you sign up and go. But we knew all of the challenges our families were under, and many, many of our high school students, you may be still seeing that in this attendance dated it to just look at. Many of our students may be choosing to work. Some of our students may be working and getting into school when they begin. So I would like to continue to incentivize our students with a very structured, multi-tiered system. But colleagues, if you've already begun to do that, let me know in what ways you've done it, so that Mr. Hur can at least know what we're doing now, and maybe we could continue to build that structure, that infrastructure. But I like the idea of incentive.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dr. Williams, you can go. I have some examples from the high schools.
Okay, sure. We do incentivize students who are showing satisfactory and/or improved attendance. You know, sometimes it is that their names may be announced on, you know, the PA system. It could be a bulletin board. There, you know, are certain innovative things that schools do, like, you know, they might list their names outside of a homeroom. They even have homeroom contests to see, you know, which homeroom. It's just, you know, friendly, but, you know, which homeroom has the highest rate of attendance for grade three, you know, amongst third-grade teachers? And, you know, the principals really kind of get into it, and the students love it. You know, in some of our schools, they have parent breakfasts where they, you know, recognize the parents, because, you know, really, for the students to get there, it's a family affair. And so they'll do a parent breakfast. So we absolutely believe in incentivizing our students who are doing the right thing. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, and I apologize, my camera just will not turn on, so I apologize. But definitely, at the high school, some, I can give an example, you know, building leaders will look very closely at their school data to say, which day is the day that we're looking like our attendance is the worst? Now, what kind of incentive can we put in place to support students making sure they come? And so, you know, a way to incentivize things at the high school is fancy food, right? So, you know, that would be a day that they would do a special luncheon for anybody who's there. So, and all the things that Dr. Williams already mentioned. So there's all kinds of little incentives to all the way up to bigger incentives that schools have put in place. You know, some schools have the opportunity to have little raffles, because they have some things that have been donated, and so they use those to incentivize. Or just different events that they offer, you know, for students to participate in that they make available to them. But definitely, they're using the data to drive that work, and as much as possible, trying to just get every single student hooked. Once they build those relationships with them, you know, that's when they're able to really hone in on, okay, now you should be coming more, you know? So that's what you see happening at the high school.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for that answer. And I give you a little homework, you can look up positive sanctions, it is a word, the term that's used. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Ann Rivera, you're up. Questions or comments for?
I don't have any questions, other than to say I appreciate your presentation. It really gave me some clarity on how this is calculated, and also where some of the variables are. And I also appreciate all of the methods we've been talking about to support attendance in schools.
Thank you for that. Board Member Scott, you're up.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. I don't have a question, just some commentary as a parent and educator. Dr. Bullock, you did a great job in explaining how attendance this year is nuanced, is as far from a normal school year. I've experienced it already with my own kids, one out six days with pneumonia, another out because of having symptoms and waiting for a negative test, a negative COVID test. I'm hearing from a lot of parents that are being safe and responsible, keeping their kids home, waiting for that negative test. So attendance is not, it's going to be impacted, again, by COVID and everything else that's going on. And I'm seeing it in Kent Town where I work, same thing. So many students that are quarantined, students that are out waiting for that negative test. And Ms. Wilson also explained well how some of our students that are now starting high school haven't been in that high school building for, you know, it's a new experience now, being in-person, or the earlier grades, elementary, or four, five to 12, the fifth graders and sixth graders, this is their first time really being in a building with all students in person. So it's far from a normal year, and people are stressed and challenged everywhere, even beyond Buffalo Public Schools. And I just hope that when some of the critics and media look at our attendance, that it's understood that it is nuanced, and there's a lot going into the absences that we are facing. we are facing. So thank, thank you, Dr. Bullock and all, and staff for all the, the deep explanation for everything that's going on and impacting attendance.
Absolutely. I go with, with, with Board Member Scott just acknowledged, I, that's my big baby, you know, they love their mama. Excuse me. The example that Board Member Scott just explained, are those considered excusable absences?
So, great question. They're excusable on the, for the child. The child should not receive any kind of negative consequence because they're sick. And, and as, as Board Member Scott said, that's what's happening, you know, we're, we're still in COVID, but we're also approaching flu season. You have allergies, my own son has allergies and asthma, and parents rightfully so are keeping kids home if they have a little cough or a little, or a little, you know, sniffle, and we want them to do that. So the kid, the family is not penalized, but those absences from the state, that's still a, that's still a child out as far as, you know, dinging, if you will, the district. And so that's another thing that I really want us to understand, as well as a district, we won't hold a child or family accountable, the state still sees that as an absence against the district.
Really important point, Ms. Ebony. Thank you for clarifying that. And Mr. Hurd, my staff has said that you are correct. I didn't hear the word positive. I just heard sanction. And of course, I, I thought that sanction doesn't equate to, to incentive, but positive sanction, which I've never heard of, that might make some sense. So thank you for that, helping us learn a new vocabulary.
Not wrong, yeah, because I made that comment about you positively. You've been good. Okay, and then lastly, President Petrouche, you're up.
Thank you, Dr. Evans Brown. Dr. Bullock, I just wondered if you could explain to people what the beds count is and what cleaning up the beds count means, just for our audience out there that may not be as well versed in school vernacular as the rest of us?
Sure. So, so when I talk about beds count, I'm talking about, I speak of the complete number of, you know, our complete enrollment number, the number of kids that are actually in our schools that have shown up. And so we will have kids that are registered and we know that they're at 305 or 97 or whatever school that they're at, 195, and we know that those are actual bodies. And then there are some kids who they may have moved out of state and they're still on our rolls. So we have to clean all that up and make sure that schools, their, their enrollment number is accurate. And then we base our attendance and things of that nature all on those numbers. So that's where, in the process of doing that now, every school will literally count every single kid. There's some other things that they put in our bed surveys, but it's about counting kids and, and what schools they are attached to.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bullock.
Okay, so I have to say, in number, Jan Ray, again, where is your handrail? Limitations, you have?
So just quickly, I just wanted to, when we were talking about incentives and whatnot for attendance, a couple of years ago, I had done a real in-depth listening tour of all my schools, and one of the things that I had really brought to when I spoke to the students was attendance, what they, what they felt about attendance, how they feel that, you know, we can uplift attendance, what are some strategies that maybe the district needs to look into? And I do have those notes still, but some of it is just such a wealth of information that comes from these, you know, that comes from these young minds that are seeing every day some of the struggles and the hurdles. And I think that, I'm not saying you don't now, but a real in-depth look and maybe really, maybe this is a survey within the schools, but right down to, to the elementary schools, as I spoke to eighth graders as well, what are the attendance issues that you see that maybe we don't see? And what do you think the district needs to do to uplift it? And again, the age ranges, the, the voices, the different strategies were just amazing. I, I really feel like that is a wealth of information that, you know, if they say, we got to get on rocket ships and come to school, obviously, we're not going to, you know, entertain that, but it's just amazing what their input brings to the table. So I really encourage that if it's not already happening, and if it is, I apologize for bringing it up, but at the same time, a student, the student voice around attendance really took me off there and enhanced with every school. That became such a focus as a question, so it became a lot of what our conversation was. And I just wanted to make sure I share that with you, and I'll pick up those notes and send them back out to you so you can get some of what they brought to us. Board Member McCosy, go ahead, Dr. Cash. I was just going to say, I, I agree. One of the student voices that I listen to are the teens in my own home, and it's very interesting that my teenagers would say, I would just get the car. I'm like, Brooklyn, what, what happened? Why homeroom says you're not here, you know, what happened? And so one of the things I'm hearing from kids that I know and love is that sometimes there's just human error too. And so I didn't put that on the slide, but that's one of the things that we're attacking, Dr. Williams and I, my assistant superintendent, Laura Samoski-Peters, we're literally calling schools and we're saying, hey, we, I now have dedicated staff that looks every day at 10, 12, and 2, and we're looking to see if attendance was taken, because that's a little thing, but it can be impactful for certain schools. And so we're calling principals and we're saying, hey, at 12 o'clock, we're still seeing two homerooms that don't have attendance. And so we're making sure that we're doing all of those interventions and then we're getting our data collection together as well. And so now we have folks looking every day, and so that's how we are supporting Dr. Williams' great work, the ASL's work and the principal's work. We know too that, as I always say, we have, we have a, our skin is in this game too, and we're going to make sure that attendance data collection is nice and clean as well. And that comes from students saying, ah, no, I was there, I was there. And so we had to go back and check that, that, that human factor.
I, I do, I do wanted to, I do want to say that I think Jan's idea about, and especially during this time, having ongoing focus groups with students is important because we don't know all the way down to the very nitty-gritty of the story, what our student's story is. And I think if you get these focus groups with a good cross-section of, of students, it will be extremely enlightening to hear some of their challenges as well as the things that they think are going well to help support them and motivate them to come to school. You get both. I like that idea, Jan. And, you know, Dr. Crestis, most recently, did an excellent focus group with students. I think we should send it out to you. I don't know if we did or not, but you should get that student feedback about a whole range of questions. So I think, Ebony, do you have that? Or is that Dr. Will, Dr. Will that has that, Crestis?
I think Dr. Will has it.
All right, Will, send that.
Will, will do. The focus groups were conducted by Jamie Cohen. She did a great job, and we'll get that out.
Circumstances change. There's so many things affecting students. We're in a climate change environment now. You could get a major weather event that could affect us for weeks. When we, when I was in Memphis, the hurricane in, in New Orleans brought displaced 2,000 students to this, to, to, to Memphis. And now you have to adjust and address all of the needs of, of the families who come often with just a shirt on their back to, to the school system. So all those things are possible, and are we agile and flexible enough to be able to respond to those needs? So keep talking to students. We just got a, a group of Afghan students into the district. We should be having a focus group with those students to see, you know, what's helping and what's hindering them, their adjustment to our school system. So I know we have the right people to do it. We have great people to do it, but we've just got to do it. So your idea there spurred that thinking, and I'm going to say right now, Will, I want us to do it, and Tanja, you and your team, keep reaching out to our new, our new students. Okay? And we'll report that to you, Board, in a subsequent student support meeting.
Sounds good. Do we know approximately how many students we, we have from Afghan?
I froze, huh? Was I frozen?
Yeah, you were.
Oh, my God.
You were frozen. Yeah, you're unfrozen.
The whole time I spoke?
No, no, no. No, no, no.
Oh, my God. I think some one of you doing that on purpose. I, I can't believe I was frozen all night, tonight. All right, I give up. I give up.
Okay, so, no. Do we know how many students from Afghanistan we have in our district yet?
I will need to talk to that with Ms. Daniels and with Nadia Nasir.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll get that information. Thank you, I was just curious.
Sure.
All mine settled. Any other questions? It is back.
I have one thing I'd like to ask.
Go ahead.
The Council of Great City Schools has opened up an opportunity for school districts to allow two students, I believe it is, two student leaders to sit on a national forum or, and meet, I think they meet about once a month, and they'll be dealing with issues. And I don't know if we have any students in our district that could be recommended for this opportunity, but it would be a great opportunity for some young, our student leaders. I have not heard anything about the student council at this point. I've not been invited to any meetings, so I'm not sure if we're up and running with those yet. But I am the liaison for that, but I, I would like to see if the district can participate in that national opportunity for our children to be a part of that group. They've had one meeting and they're still looking, they're still open for others. So I'd just like to throw that out there.
Perfect, yes. Interhigh is up and running and doing well. The first meeting will be in October, so you will be, it'll be this month, and you will be invited to that meeting. They will be holding elections so that we can get our student, board member, all ready to be at the October board meeting. So you'll get invited.
Ms. Common, could you send us the process that the young people would need to apply to or what the process to be? You know, because we, I know we have talent and it would be great for our students to be on that, so.
I'd be happy to forward it tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All mine set, clear. I don't see any change. This is the conclusion of student achievement. Have a wonderful night. It is 8:06.
We do have an executive session tonight that I emailed the board members about last week.
Okay.
So with that, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the pending litigation with Westminster and Enterprise Chartered Schools? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Do we take five, Nate?
Yes, yes.
All right, let's go five.
Do we got to log off or log back on to secure?